Thank you. Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of May 12, 2022 to order. At this time, I would like to invite all who would like to and are able to stand to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for. All right. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holstage?
Here.
Councilmember Kors?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Present.
Mayor Potem Garner?
Here.
Mayor Middleton?
Present.
All members are present.
All right. With that, we are going to have a special presentation this evening, and I would like to invite Lori Alahan and John Siegel to come up to the podium and speak to us regarding the upcoming Ride of Silence.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, both here and on the screens. Six weeks ago, a good friend of mine, Keith Kohler, a longtime Palm Springs resident, and I were undertaking a journey to ride our bikes from San Diego to St. Augustine, Florida. We made it with ten other cyclists as far as Austin, Texas, on the morning that we were leaving to go to La Grange. Keith first was hit by a car, and then I was. Keith was thrown about thirty feet. His bicycle was broken into four pieces. My leg was broken. I received wounds that I'm still recovering from. And every morning, I wake up and am thankful for my blessings and how good fortune, what good fortune I have, because I am recovering. I'm also privileged to have had the opportunity to crawl on my hands and knees to Keith, to hold on to him and to tell him how much I loved him while he died. The motorcycle, the motorists didn't stop. There's no telling, and there may never be any telling. What circumstances might have caused them to swerve into us or to leave without stopping. But I do know that as cyclists, we were following all laws, and we were using best practices for safety and for sharing the roads. Nonetheless, we lost a great person. Keith was intelligent and well-educated and funny and well-traveled. He ran marathons on the Great Wall and in Antarctica and in Brazil. He ran marathons in Kenya and in Iceland. He rode his bike the entire course of the Tour de France. He rode his bike in Croatia and Slovenia and Italy and Rome and France and Germany and places I couldn't even find on a map if I tried to. As much as I recognize that we lost a wonderful person and a unique person, I know also that the families of friends of Will Campbell and Richard Morales and Christopher Jones and William Mohan and Yacine O'Deander all lost unique and special people just since 2020, when the bicycles that they were riding on were hit by motorists. They join their names, the list of names of thirty-five cyclists in the Coachella Valley that since 2010 have lost their lives by virtue of riding a bike and being hit by a car. There's something to be learned from all of this, and that is that we, both as motorists and as cyclists, need to do our share to share the road safely. For motorists and even for law enforcement individuals, your duty is to keep current on cycling laws. They change. What you learned when you got your driver's license or attended the academy is no longer valid and is not relevant. Laws change every couple of years to better protect the rights of people to ride their bicycle on the street. For cyclists, you need to know all of that, plus you need to use best practices in wearing bright colors and reflective clothing. You need to wear helmets and headlights and taillights, and you need to always, always drive in the direction of traffic. For everybody, it's important to know that it is no safer to ride a bicycle after drinking than it is to drive after drinking. It's important that we help spread this word, and in order to do so, there will be an event next week. And John Siegel is going to tell us a little bit about the Ride of Silence.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks for having us. Next Wednesday, we're going to have a Ride of Silence here at Ruth Hardy Park in Palm Springs. It's part of a global event that occurs in various cities around the globe, all at seven o'clock local time. And so we're going to be, we're going to gather at Ruth Hardy at 6:30. We're going to be able to enjoy each other's company. We're going to have comments by the leading officials here in the valley. And then at seven o'clock, we're going to have, we're going to have the Ride of Silence. We're crafting this event to be especially inclusive. We're going to make sure that people of all levels, of all ages, whether or not they have bicycles, can come to and promote the concept of safe, being safe on the streets. And the, so, so the story is that we're, at seven o'clock, we're going to have a short, a short loop on some very safe streets over in that neighborhood, up to Miralast, back, back down to Caballeros. And we're going to have a couple of, a couple of relatively short loops so that anybody of any, of any capability can, can enjoy, can join us and enjoy it. And then the other thing is that if any of you need to have your bikes tuned up to participate in this event, please let me know. We've, we've got, we've got a lot of volunteer mechanics who want to help. Thanks.
John, Lori, thank you for coming in. I think many in the public know that issues around traffic and pedestrian and cycling safety is a passion of mine. That passion has many causes, but it began a little less than ten years ago when my son, who's an accomplished cyclist, came within a second of being killed while he was out on a ride in a accident between a car and his cycle. He's doing just great now. Thank you. With that, we will move on to next item, acceptance of the agenda. City council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items that staff or a council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote? Councilmember Kors?
Yeah, can we please remove 1M, as in Mesquite?
Okay, 1M. Are there any other items for removal? All right. Then we will accept the agenda with removal of item 1M. We'll now move on to report of the closed session. City Attorney, please provide a report on closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and the general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. City Clerk, do we have any registered speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Lars Viklund, followed by Matthew Shuck and Carl Enzor.
Hello, I'm Lars Viklund. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, for having me and listening to me tonight. I'm here to, to oppose the Fuego nightclub.
Mr. Viklund, that's a public hearing item, and so we'll be taking all of the comments for public hearing items at the time of the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, if I could, the council closed the public hearing at the last meeting, so technically, these are just brown act public comments.
Thank you for correcting me.
Is it okay if I go on? Okay, thank you very much. I signed up to speak at the last meeting for two minutes, but I never got called, so I was on the phone. But anyway, I own a few businesses in Palm Springs the last twenty-five years, the Del Marcos Hotel, La Serena Villas, and the 350. But I also own the Orleans Apartment Buildings, which is adjacent to the bank building where Fuego is trying to put in a nightclub. I represent tonight about approximately fifty tenants that live in the apartment buildings. I believe about twenty of them wrote letters and sent them into the city to oppose Fuego. They're, we're all very concerned about the noise. At that time in the morning, a lot of the tenants have lived in the building for twenty years. A lot of them are elderly. A lot of them have medical conditions, and they're very concerned about the noise. The parking lot backs up. It's very adjacent to the bedroom windows and the doors. In some places, probably about three feet away from the parking lot where the bank is. We do have, we do share one wall as well. The limited amount of parking also at the bank building is very concerning to all the tenants. There's already, we have huge problems for parking on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and as well as we have big problems with noise at the apartment buildings from the existing clubs, which are the Village Pub and Moxie. And we're very concerned with the new bar, the Chill Bar going in. That has not opened yet. That's going to exasperate all the noise issues and problems that we have for parking in the area. So, thank you very much, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Matthew Shuck, followed by Carl Enzor and Kelly Viklund.
Mayor Middleton and City Council, my name is Carl Enzor. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer of Eisenhower Health Centers in Palm Springs, and speaking on behalf of Martin Macielo, our president and CEO of Eisenhower Health. The opening of the nightclub next to our building, 415 South Palm Canyon, will have a definite negative impact on our business. Parking is very limited in the bank building parking area. The guests would be parking in our lot at night or on Bellardo Road, and the only access to Palm Canyon Drive is by walking through our property. Physicians and staff often work late into the evening, and we now have concerns for their additional safety. Each morning, we clean up drug paraphernalia, alcohol containers, trash, and human waste. We face nightly issues with vandalism and homelessness. The increase in traffic on our property late into the night will bring increase in criminal activity, vandalism, graffiti, and trash. This proposed venue would aggravate the present issue and will impact our ability to provide safe patient access to health care in our clinic. We'll be subject to additional expenses of security and landscaping services. So let me just repeat. This will have a serious negative impact on our business and especially health care services we provide our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question of the last speaker? If you'd come on. Yeah, could you, if you, thank you very much. Just, what are your hours of operation?
We are open from, we see our first patient at 7:30 in the morning, and often our last patients are at six o'clock at night. But when the last patient leaves, the business doesn't end, so our staff are often there till seven, 7:30. Some of our physicians as late as eight o'clock at night.
clubs that they have run and run successfully, and therefore are not confident that the security plan put forward would be able to be implemented and actualized upon. That's a significant concern for our many guests and many patrons to our outlets, and we would ask you consider a final vote of no in this matter. Thank you.
Kelly Viklund, followed by Tempe Essel and Jeff Jones.
Thank you for having me. My name's Kelly Viklund, and I own, with my husband, La Serena Villas, Del Marcos Hotel, and the 350, all on Bellardo. We're very concerned about, one, the noise. I mean, we had to shut down for three months. We're still rebuilding our business. We've put our heart and soul into our hotels and to our restaurant, and as Matt said, we definitely drive the economy and help the community and love our community. We're just very, very concerned how this is going to negatively affect our guest experience, and that in the hospitality business is our main concern. So, we're already dealing with entitlement, and I know you all know, like, since COVID has started, the short staffing, and to put that another layer upon us just seems very, very daunting, and I hope that, you know, those planning commission voted it down 7 to 0, and I thought, okay, we're good. It's a voice of reason. So, I don't know to have a conditional use permit, if that's going to solve a problem that eventually will have to stop. And also, I just wanted to say, like, when we call the police at night due to noise issues, it's not a quick response because they too are understaffed, as many of us are. So I'm just really hoping that you'll see through to voting down and saying no to Fuego. And lastly, the parking issue is already a disaster. We have Village Pub, we have the street fair, we have the homeless problem. We had to put additional parking in our hotel just for our 18 rooms. So I haven't seen really a good plan that Fuego is addressing for that. That won't be problematic. So I thank you for taking your time and allowing me to speak, and hope we make the good decision. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could also ask a question of this applicant?
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you for the success, one of your hotels. They're great.
I appreciate that.
I love them, I frequent them, they're great. I don't stay there, but I eat there.
Come stay patient.
But I just, have you had a chance to read through the conditions of approval that staff presented? I think there's, like, eight or nine dealing with noise. Have you had a chance to read those at all?
What stands out to me is that they're having security guards and also putting up signs that say, those are the two prominent in my mind. None of them stood up enough where I thought it changed my mind, or maybe this could work. I mean, we're already having one club there that's going to directly affect, as Matt said, the new clubs directly across from Del Marcos. I just don't see the nightclubs being in a residential facility, especially, you know, the historical tennis district. And our properties are historical, and we've had to, you know, really, really abide by strict guidelines. So, that would be, the nine bullet points did not make me feel any more secure that this could be a good venture to go into.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Jones, followed by Laura Slipick.
I think he was one.
Oh, Tempe Essel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm speaking to you tonight as the Secretary of the Historic Tennis Club Organization Incorporated and as a full-time resident of the historic tennis neighborhood. We are a unique neighborhood that has coexisted with many small boutique hotels over the years. We have found that mixed-use neighborhoods has many advantages. The key element to this coexistence is that we respect each other as neighbors. We are sensitive to noise, parking, traffic, and large groups that visit our neighborhood on a regular basis throughout the year. The Fuego nightclub cup was denied by the planning commission as it does not meet the criteria of being a good neighbor or an asset to the neighborhood. Bruce T. Bauer wrote an excellent letter on April 21st, 2022, that outlines very clearly why this project is not a good fit for the location or the neighborhood. He represents a number of hotels in the area along with an apartment complex. I have spoken to additional small hotels in the neighborhood, and they concur that this project would not be an asset to the neighborhood. We are asking the City Council to respect the residents and the small business owners of our neighborhood and uphold the planning commission's unanimous recommendation to deny this conditional use. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Protem Gardner, and City Council. My name is Jeff Jones, and my comments are about Fuego nightclub. I reside at 372 South Bellardo Road in the Historic Tennis Club neighborhood. My comments are concerning the proposed nightclub at 383 South Palm Canyon. My location and the residences at 373 South Palm Canyon together make up the Orleans Apartments property. I was surprised and disappointed to learn the applicant for the Fuego nightclub is appealing the planning commission's decision in March denying the application. Though it is completely within their right to do so, my neighbors and I remain strongly opposed to the idea of creating a nightclub venue in the historic bank building, which is at 383 South Palm Canyon. As many of us commented during the commission's meeting in March, this would devastate our quality of life. The bank building is not just next door to the Orleans. The structures are literally adjoined on the Palm Canyon side of the property. Photos were sent to City Council earlier, so you can clearly see the close proximity. We remain unconvinced any measures being promised by the applicant would adequately control noise pollution for the residents and the neighborhood. The proposed hours of operation are exclusively in the evening and well into the AM. Imagine trying to sleep next door to that. Also, parking, being the issue that it is, clubgoers are going to add to this issue without a doubt. The neighbors I've spoken with are not opposed to revitalization in our neighborhood, including the bank building. However, a nightclub is the worst idea possible. A nightclub would be our nightmare. Where hopefully you will hear our concerns, consider the consequences, and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Laura Slipick, followed by Brittany Tom.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Slipick. I also reside at 372 South Bellardo Road. Jeff is actually our person who actually talked to all of our neighbors, and we all, oh, okay, I'm a little shorter. We're just very saddened by something that could basically pull people out of the apartment building. Nobody wants to live next to a club. As somebody said before, would you like to live next to a disco, a club, somewhere where there's 350 people roaming around the streets at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning after they get out, go to their car, you know, maybe even have cocktails at their car, waiting, hanging out? I mean, I don't know if you heard, but of course, down the street is the Village Pub. They've had shootings, they have stabbings, all kinds of drugs, I mean, drug addicts and homeless are all over the place. So what we ask you also is, we have at least six or eight elderly that are living in the building that cannot move, they can't afford to move, and their lifestyle will be completely changed if they had to move. So we're asking to please think about it, that none of us really want to live next to a nightclub. And of course, the parking situation and everything that Jeff said, I agree with. Good afternoon.
Brittany Tom.
Hi, my name's Brittany Tom. I'm also a resident at the Orleans Apartments. And like Laura and Jeff said, I'm also very strongly opposed, as is many of the tenants here. I have brought letters from the tenants, signing them, basically, you know, stating that they're opposed to it, just to show you how many of us are, you know, very, I wouldn't think this is a great idea at all. It would just, it would really disrupt our quality of life, as everyone said, in addition to all the obvious reasons, you know, the parking and the noise. One thing about the noise that I want to bring up, in a club, it's super, super, really, really loud, and there's also bass. So, with the bass, it's going to be shaking our building, like, in the late hours of the night, that I don't think many have, you know, really thought about that. So I wanted to bring that up. But going back to just the residents, I mean, I brought up in the first meeting, how would you like to live, you know, next to a nightclub? It's just not fun. We're normal people. We have, you know, 9:05 jobs, Monday through Friday, like, we need to sleep. It's really disruptive. And like Laura said, there's elderly. I've also brought pictures here, just to show you how close the proposed building is to our apartment complex. So there I am, I'm literally touching, touching the proposed location, so I can touch it from my apartment complex. And then, this is, just shows how close this is. And right, actually, right behind me is an elderly lady who's also very sick, and this would literally just crush her health. She's in the worst spot for this. It would just be so destructive to her. So I would ask that you also think about that. Yeah, we don't want this at all. It's a great idea in maybe a different location, not next to an apartment complex. So, please think about that. Thank you. I'll leave these here.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our list.
Okay, seeing no more additional speakers, the public testimony is now closed. The next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without the following item, which was removed for separate discussion, item 1M, as in Mesquite.
Motion to approve, to accept.
Are we going to do motions orally, or?
Orally, please.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you. And are we voting orally, or? Yes, okay, roll call.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0.
And we will move to item 1M, as in Mesquite, and Councilmember Coors, you asked this item to be pulled.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I pulled this for two reasons. One, when we looked at this item, which is the Guaranteed Income Project, money to help apply for state funding with DAP Health and Queer Works. I know Council had a lot of questions and gave feedback before we approved it, and the state at the time had given an indication we were literally days away from when they were going to be releasing the request for proposals. And so there was a timing, as often happens with the state, they still haven't done that. And I think staff did a really good job working on the MOU and really flushing out the specifics, taking into account a lot of the things we said. So I wanted to have the city manager share that with the public. And I also wanted to request that the MOU with the city be both with Queer Works but also with DAP Health. And I spoke to David Brinkman, the CEO of DAP Health, who is very, said he's totally fine with them also being on it, since they're both equal partners in this project.
Mayor and Council, I'm happy to address, just from a general perspective, our approach to the MOU. We sat down with representatives of Queer Works and a consultant working with DAP, and basically talked through the project, acknowledging that the state has yet to finalize some of its grant application guidelines. I think they understand that depending on that guidance, that the program may change. So for instance, we discussed the potential to increase the size of the population that might participate in the pilot. They also discussed that there may be an opportunity or need to move beyond some of the eligibility criteria that they had discussed when presenting to Council. They talked generally about the flow of due diligence and how to structure the MOU. We built in a couple of provisions based on the conversations that we were having. Two, I would point out specifically, one is that any other substantive changes to the program that could be in approach, in partnership, or things that they may learn about the grant program that cause them to consider shifting or pivoting, that we would be kept apprised of those changes. And the other, in addition to information that would be needed to substantiate reimbursements, we also asked for monthly reports so that other progress that's made, whether it's engaging during the due diligence, contacting possible donors, success in philanthropy, et cetera, that we'd also get that kind of information. So that's where the MOU stands now, and Jeff Bounder can probably address this more specifically, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't add DAP Health to the MOU.
Are there other questions or comments from Council?
The only thing I would add, although I can do it in a request later, is that we discuss what, if any, budget allocation we would make to this project beyond this during the budget timing, as I think it would be good to let them know if there is going to be funding, if they do get the state funding, and what that amount might be. But for the motion, I would just ask, I would move this but include DAP Health as a party to the MOU.
I'll second that motion.
All right. I would like to make a short comment, and first I want to congratulate and thank Councilmember Holstich for her passion on this issue and for her advocacy on this issue. I've come to a different conclusion regarding how we should proceed, and I do so very reluctantly and with great respect for those who see it differently. But I cannot support a basic income program. I don't believe it's a municipal responsibility to act in this area, and I don't believe the outlines of the programs are such that they will win broad public approval and adoption. And for those reasons, I will be voting no. If there are any other comments, please, let's have the vote.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
I have a tendency to agree with the mayor on this, and it really is about municipal responsibility, so I'm just prefacing my vote. On the other hand, I think that what we were trying to do is to give a social service program that is missing from our suite of programs, an opportunity to start. I have a little concern about the viability of the new startup, but I do appreciate Councilmember Coors adding in DAP, so I will vote yes for it.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
No.
Motion carries, 4-1.
The next portion of our agenda are public hearings. Item 2A is consideration of an appeal by PSPC Enterprises concerning the planning commission's decision to deny a conditional use permit for the Fuego nightclub located at 383 South Palm Canyon Drive. This item was brought before City Council on April 21st. After hearing from the applicant and receiving public testimony, the City Council continued its deliberations to tonight's meetings. Do we have a staff report, please?
I have to recuse for potential business conflict. Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. As you noted, this item was reviewed at your last meeting on April 21st, where you held the public hearing for the appeal for the nightclub use. It is a 9,504-square-foot facility proposed at 383 South Palm Canyon Drive. The matter was reviewed by the planning commission on March 9th, and they did vote to deny the conditional use permit. The app- The applicant, for the application, appealed this decision, which was, as I mentioned, heard at the last meeting, and you continued it to tonight, to allow additional evaluation by our police department. So the applicant met with the chief and administrative staff with the police department on May 3rd to go over the security plan and the measures that are proposed to address public safety and the operation, and generally had a good meeting on the proposed use. We also asked for additional comments, just so that we had it for our records, and that was forwarded to the council today. And so they've identified several issues related to the potential concerns with the operation, one being parking, concern with the adequacy of parking based on-site, and potential for jaywalking across the street if, if the adjacent parking lot at Rite Aid is utilized. The applicant has noted that they would provide a shuttle service or install a mid-block crossing along Palm Canyon to address this issue, and the police department said that that may be helpful for the operation. In terms of noise, there have been noise complaints from the Business District in the past, from other businesses that are in the area. And so the police department has identified that the sound mitigation that is proposed would be necessary and should be completed in order to address those concerns. Lastly, there is a concern about crime potentially with additional venue of this size, and increasing more crime or DUIs as a result of an additional nightclub in the area. And of course, that would contribute to the kind of already taxed resources that the police department has when bars and nightclubs are closing at that same time. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. The chief also may have any, may have some additional comments, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Chief?
Mayor and council members, we did have a very productive meeting with the people who are putting the nightclub, or hoping to put the nightclub in, and have received many comments from the community as well. We still have concerns over the noise, potential uptick in crime, as well as parking, which is not necessarily a police responsibility, however, in the area, when you look at the size of the parking lot compared to the amount of patrons that are proposed, it certainly causes a concern. So I'm available for any questions that you might have of us, and, and submit the report as it stands.
Are there, thank you, chief, thank you, Dave. Are there any questions from council for staff? Councilmember Coors?
I'm just muted myself. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me follow up with the chief a little, because I read, you know, the security plan that was approved. And then we saw an email that I assume was sent to one of the, someone involved with the applicant, we got afternoon today, from, I think Sergeant Carano, raising some additional concerns about crime and some of these issues. Is that the first time that the applicant got that, received that?
Yes, the applicant received it this afternoon.
So I do have a little concern that they haven't had time to really respond, right? The last they spoke to the police department, they signed off on their security plan. And I know we asked these questions, and I, I understand how busy everyone is, I just wondered, if it's really right to bring this back, with them not having any time to look into solutions and to be able to respond to this? I don't know if the city manager has any thoughts on that, or the city attorney, but it really doesn't seem fair that we want everyone to have a fair hearing. And that was new information to me, and really impacted my thinking on this, and I would like to have the applicant have some time to think about it and come up with some responses, as they did on parking, since our last meeting, when we raised those concerns.
Mayor and council, it, I certainly think it might be appropriate, if it's your direction, to continue the item so that the applicant has more time to consider some of the notes that were delivered recently. I might ask Mr. Newell, I know at least some of those comments, I believe, were somewhat of a reiteration of other concerns that were made and, and addressed, and maybe restated, not meant to add emphasis or to suggest that they weren't addressed, while others may be new or, or expressed in a, in a new way. So, Mr. Newell, can you just help us understand how many of those are, are new and how many are somewhat restated?
Certainly. So I would say that the parking and noise were kind of restatements of issues that we already knew were concerns. And so I think with the conditions that we have currently relative to the noise, that that could be addressed. In terms of the parking, however, there, there hasn't been any additional conditions imposed relative to either a mid-block crossing or some sort of parking management plan that could allow the applicant to find offsite parking, such as they've suggested, across the street. In the event that the council did move forward, we would, that would be a new condition that we might add, if that was the direction of council.
But the other ones about potential increase in crime and violence and all those other things, that's the first I recall seeing it, but was that stated somewhere in the original staff report?
I don't believe we had that specifically addressed.
And that seems significant, like a really significant issue. If we have to make a finding, this won't have negative impacts to get that, and it just seems the applicants have a chance to respond to that. I know they have come up with proposals on parking and some of the noise issues, and obviously, we could add those as conditions. I don't know if there are options on the other ones, and I, so that was my concern on timing. It just doesn't seem sort of fair in the circumstances. And if we do continue it, and that'll be up to council, I, two other things really came to my mind on this. One is, was a nightclub an allowed use 20, 30 years ago? Like, when did it become an allowed use? Would be helpful for me to know. And also, because I think it was 2015 when the bank was approved, and I was at many events there, and they were allowed to have music in outdoor and indoor events. It would be helpful to know what the conversation conditions were there, and if there were, what the complaint levels were from that, to see the impact that had as well, if we, if we already did continue this. And I'd do my preference that we don't. We give the applicant time to speak to the police on the email they got at afternoon today, and discuss those as well. And I guess my only other thing for you, Mr. Newell, is if they opened as a restaurant, like some of the other ones that some of the neighbors and hotels were understandably complaining about, they don't have to have CUPs, could they just open and then become a nightclub and have all the music and cocktails till 2:00 in the morning, like some of the other ones do? That have been creating some of the problems that were referred to in that email and from public comment?
Certainly, yes. So to address the first question, relative to how long nightclubs have been permitted, the Central Business District, the permitted uses relative to nightclubs hasn't changed in several decades. So I would imagine it's been that way probably for 40 or 50 years. And then, so, yeah, so to answer that, it does still, you know, it's always required a conditional use permit, of course. But that, I think, addresses the first question. The second question about if it were to open up, or, excuse me, the prior operation, the, the meeting venue was approved under a conditional use permit, and that is a requirement of the Central Business District. And that venue did have similar conditions relative to complying with the noise ordinance. I looked at the occupancy, it was smaller, they weren't using all of the floor space that the proposed operation is using, but they nonetheless were an event operation that did have events with noise, or, I should say, amplified sound potentially inside and sometimes outside with a special permit. And then thirdly, your question about if it were to open as a restaurant, that would be a different liquor license and would be processed as a land use permit, so it's an administrative use permit that is issued by staff. And if they were applying for a nightclub operation as well, for instance, like where Reforma will be located, they did go through a conditional use permit process.
Which one? A reformer, but Moxie, for example, today?
I don't believe they did, because I think they were operating as a restaurant.
Were, yeah. Okay, thank you. So I don't know, I mean, it's the main, oh, sorry. I was just saying, I would be inclined to postpone it, but just for discussion purposes, I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Councilmember Coors, thank you, Mayor. I just have a follow-up question. So can you explain more about the approvals for the bank when it was a event space? So I spoke to the applicant, I also toured around with people who are in opposition. And so the applicant shared that, you know, they bought the building, thinking that, you know, it was used as an event space with same and similar noise and parking impacts, and they thought this would be sort of a reduced use, because this would be only a few days a week on the weekends, instead of every night as it was permitted. So can you just explain the difference between what it was, what the use was before for the bank, when it was an event space, and what permitting was required, and then what's changed? And I know you just did this with Councilmember Coors, but trying to understand the differences between restaurant use that allows music and bar use and event space use versus a club?
Sure. So the conditional use permit was approved for a, essentially, a meeting or banquet facility. They are identified differently in the, in the Central Business District zoning, so they are categorized actually different. But the operation was approved for seven days a week operation, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Whether they operated during all of those times or not, I don't, I don't believe they were, but they did have that option available to them under their, their conditions. In terms of the, the use differences, I would say that obviously the, the primary difference being that a nightclub typically is going to have music on at most times, versus where you, in the case where you might have an event venue, they may have meetings that happen, they might have banquets, they might have operations that aren't typically involving sound, amplified sound at all times. So that's kind of primarily the, the main difference, I would say, and why we categorize them differently.
Thanks. And when was that initial CUP for the event space approved?
It was approved in 2015.
So in 2015, the city council at that time made the same findings that we're being recommended to make or not, right? Finding that the use was appropriate and all those other findings for the neighborhood, right?
Yeah, it was approved by, at the Planning Commission level.
Sorry, at the Planning Commission level. Okay, and did they hear from neighbors at the time, or is there any other information that you might have about those findings in 2015?
I don't recall if they had much opposition at the time, but there was a public hearing and notification was sent to surrounding neighbors.
Thank you. And then, can you detail, is the parking requirements different for an event space versus a nightclub use?
They are essentially the same. They, the Central Business District and the downtown parking combining zone categorize assembly uses very similar, so that's one parking space for 250 square feet of area where the public is assembling.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
So just, I want to follow up. When I, I would agree with Councilmember Coors, I think maybe going back and fleshing it out more would be a helpful thing for everyone involved. So in 2015, we approved a CUP for an event space. So anybody could come in today and open that event space. The difference between that and what we're looking at tonight is they want to make it a nightclub, which is, which is 24-hour music, I'm not, I'm confused of what the difference is between the two, and I haven't looked at the definitions in our code.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to the code as well, to see if there's an actual definition, but I think in general, what I would say, yes, someone could come back today and open up a, a meeting venue, an event venue at that location, without amending their conditional use permit. That conditional use permit was issued. If they were to comply with the floor plan, the conditions, that conditional use permit can continue, and they would be able to operate under that permit. But generally, I think the difference being that an event location, you know, might have, as I said, it might have an event where you have a wedding, you might have, you know, Modernism Week, educational symposiums, things like that, that might involve someone with a speaker, you know, talking on a microphone, and not necessarily the continual amplified sound that you typically see with a nightclub.
So I, I think as you come back to us, for both the benefit of the neighbors, the benefit of the applicant, and the benefit of us, is to know that distinction, because, you know, could they just amend the existing CUP? And I'm just really a little bit unclear about that, and I think probably a lot of people are, on what that actually means. And if this new applicant decided to run it as an event space, oh, let me back up, a wedding has dancing and music, and, and I, and I think they've even held dances there. So I just want clarification as we come back on that. For me, you know, a conditional use permit is when a use is next to another use that are not necessarily compatible, and you have to put conditions in to make sure that they operate well together. I'm, it's a little frustrating that the conditions that we have here, one, have not been upgraded after we gave some suggestions at the last meeting. We gave suggestions, I personally gave suggestions about people crossing the street, I personally gave suggestions about the parking, I personally gave suggestions about a 24-hour telephone number, signs on the outside. And I was kind of surprised, I thought that would be the negotiation that would happen between staff, the neighbors, and the applicant, to get somewhere, and we just got the same conditions back. And for me, if we're going to do a project this controversial, or this, where there's a, there's, I say controversial, because there's people on each side, we need to have really good, solid conditions in there that are enforceable and are very, very specific, not generalized, as some of them are now, because I think some of the complaints that I've heard is that it's hard for our police department or our coenforcement officers, when it's not distinct, succinct, to actually enforce those, and we want those to be enforced in that. So my thing would be to go back and work on those conditions. I don't know if the applicant knows how much a mid-cross, crossing costs, one, or if our engineering department would even allow it. So it really is a cross-departmental coordination that needs to occur, to see if this is realistic or not, on that. We, I think at the last meeting, we also talked about like the number of security guards and everything, but there's no conditions on any of that. So if this particular person, this particular operator left, the new operator could have none. And I don't think that's what the neighbors are asking for. I think they want surety in what's going to go in, and surety about noise in particular, and some other stuff that's going on. So I would second, if it was a motion, Councilmember Coors, to go back and work with the applicant and the neighborhood, the neighbors, much more closely, and bring us back something that's solid, that we can sink our teeth into. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, that was a motion, so I guess that's a second. I do want to add, and thank you, Councilmember Holstich, because it reminded me, I did meet with the owner of the apartment building and several of the nearby hotels. I've also spoken to the general manager of the Avalon, and I also spoke to the applicant. And I've been back to the property three times, including last night, just to walk it. And I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Woods. You know, the applicant has actually taken a lot of the suggestions and had found out the cost from staff, the range for the And I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Woods. You know, the applicant has actually taken a lot of the suggestions and had found out the cost from staff, the range for the lit-up crosswalk, and was agreeable to that, and a number of the other suggestions. And I agree, and if we need a date certain, which is my understanding, I want to make sure we give sufficient time to do all the things you just went through, so that when this comes back, and we may not get everyone in agreement, we know that, but we have the conditions after staff has met, you know, ideally jointly with those supporters and the applicant, and those who are concerned about the impacts, with what those conditions would be. So we really have something to evaluate, and I would definitely like to see what the conditions were and what was allowed when it was the bank as well, because your question is one that I've been thinking about, and I think you articulated that exactly how I would have liked to, so I appreciate that.
Ian, I have a couple of comments that I would like to make as well. This location is in my district, it's one I'm very familiar with, as well as being extremely familiar with the businesses and the residents that live alongside that area. To compare a nightclub to the history of this event space is simply a mistake. I cannot recall a single complaint that has come to me during the five years that I've been on city council regarding the bank and its operation as an event space because there were very few events, and this is proposed to be a nightly nightclub, one that will be very active on the weekends in particular. The events that were held at the bank were frequently held in late afternoon when they would have had significantly less impact on the neighbors and on the community. And I will, I will not oppose another extension of time to debate this issue and give the applicant full opportunity. I want everyone to be treated fairly. But we are facing what is a impossible position to try to fix. This nightclub in this neighborhood will never work. And it will never. So if it is the sentiment of council to extend and give the applicant an opportunity to continue, again, I won't oppose that, but I do not believe we can change the facts on the ground. You cannot move that apartment building that adjoins right alongside this nightclub. You can't move the seniors, seniors and others out of there. Thank you. Mr. Woods.
Thank you. Can I ask staff if you'd come up one more time? You know, this is a very difficult issue, obviously, on many levels, and the, I think reference from letters we received, testimony we received, is particularly about Village, The Village, I think it's called now, no longer The Pub, and Moxie. And I think you said just earlier, Moxie is a restaurant, not a nightclub. But it appears that it might be functioning as a nightclub, and I actually have personally been at a restaurant next door, and the doors were wide open, the speakers were blaring. Are we, they have no CUP, I assume, if it's operating as a restaurant?
If it's operating as a restaurant, then they would have a land use permit, which is a permit that can be revoked.
Okay, so have we, you know, we've gotten a lot of complaints about it, have, are we investigating what's going on at Moxie? Because it seems to be the benchmark which we're weighing this club will operate at. And if we have a club that's not operating properly, right, and causing problems, what's our, and the city's not enforcing it, you know, that's not good on the city, and I can see where the residents would have no confidence in something like that. So I bring that up as something to investigate, and I can just tell you, I personally witnessed it, if it's not operating as, if it's a restaurant. I mean, you could not literally talk across a table in the restaurant next to Moxie on a Friday night. Yeah. So, or across the street, I think, as I heard from the neighbors. And I, and I, so I totally understand their lack of confidence, and we really need to understand how they were approved and enforce whatever regulations we have, so that it's not operating as a nightclub and setting a bad precedence for other businesses wanting to come in. Thank you.
It is a difficult issue, and we, we may need to go back and revisit some of our permitting process when it comes to restaurants that also operate as semi-nightclubs, but I don't believe adding one more problematic property is the answer. Councilmember Kors, I think you were making a motion or have made a motion to continue.
Yeah, I think I had a motion, I just, I think we need a date certain, I just want to confirm that.
I would recommend to a date certain, yes.
I think it probably needs more than two weeks, given three weeks didn't really get us as far as we need, and I know we have the budget and the two meetings in June, so I don't know if there's time in June, or we should give enough time to July to really flush this out. I think there are a lot of questions we've asked here, and the only thing I'll, and, you know, my district is across the street, so I hear from those businesses, and people who live on the other side of Palm Canyon, right across from this property as well. And, you know, I don't want to go in assuming it's going to be problematic, because other people may not be following the law, but I also want to know that the police feel they can address, if we can't address people who aren't following the rules, are we going to be able to address this one even if they do? So I think there's really a lot more to delve into here, and I have no idea, you know, I see both sides here clearly, and, you know, the downtown corridor is our entertainment district, it has been for decades before the apartment building was there, but I also really appreciate, you know, 2:00 in the morning is not an okay time to be waking anyone up by people hanging out, regardless of where it's from. And that's why I have a challenge trying to make a finding that this won't have a negative impact. So I think giving enough time, if the applicant is open to that, to really trying to figure this out, what the conditions would be, so then we have, we and the neighbors and the applicant all have what this would be, right? Now we're all making assumptions, because that's all we can do. And I think, given the questions, is that sufficient for staff to sort of move forward? Mr. Newell and the chief, is that, have we given enough appropriate feedback for you? Do you need anything else from us?
No, we have direction.
Right. For the city manager, is this June or July in your, I just want to be really conscious how long the two budget meetings can take.
Yeah, I think from an availability standpoint from our agendas, this could likely be June, as long as we can complete the analysis that council is looking for at that time.
And is the, and just from history, it could always change, the first of the two budget hearings are usually the really long ones, and the second's a second vote? If that's what you're thinking, should this be the second meeting in June?
I think, especially if we want to err on the side of caution with the kind of analysis you're asking for, we could identify the second meeting in June.
Okay. And if the applicant's here, can we check that that is okay with the applicant to do that?
I see nodding heads.
Okay. And that would be my request, and I don't have our things in front of me, I think it's June 30th, but I could be wrong.
I believe you're correct. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Councilmember Kors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Hi.
Motion carries four zero with one recusal.
All right, let's welcome Mayor Proton Garner back. All right, we, we are going to move on, and I'll ask folks to take the conversation outside. Thank you. Next item is item 2B, an application by Barbara and Keith Kazian, owners of a historic designation for the Gilman residence located at four, or excuse me, 574 West Mariscal Drive, case of the HSPB number 142. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I think I need to speak up, I can't be, I guess I'm not being heard. So the matter before you is a nomination for a, the residence, the Gilman residence. It was designed by Herbert Burns in 1948, and additions occurred in the mid-'50s. The structure was built during the period of significance, which is the post-World War II in Palm Springs, and is an excellent example of the late-modern style that has become very popular in the city. So the exhibit here on the screen shows you some of the, or it shows you the layout of the residence on the property, on the south, or bottom of the picture is where the street is. The residence surrounds the pool and spa in the center, and the colors that you see here, the blue and green and orange are the portions of the home that were built in the '50s, and actually, the main portion was '48. So the blue portion is the, built in '48, and then '52 and '55 are shown in green and orange. There was an addition in the '80s that's shown in yellow. So this is, these are photos of the residence back in the '50s, so an image from 1951 on the left, and another image standing on the interior courtyard space in 1950. And see, the home was restored in more recent years, and these are contemporary images showing the architecture of the residence. The Historic Site Preservation Board reviewed the matter and held a public hearing on April 5th, and recommended city council nominate the property a Class I landmark structure. They found that the criteria in the historic preservation ordinance have been met to designate the property, specifically criterion number three, that it exemplifies a particular period in history, this being the post-World War II era. And then criterion number five, it does have a higher artistic value, this being the late-modern style. And finally, that the structure does retain a sufficient degree of integrity for the Class I nomination. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. The matter is a public hearing, and staff is recommending, as well as the HSPB, that the property be designated Class I. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Woods.
Just curiosity, I'm not, and I totally trust our HSPB, but when a building, a residence like this, has gone through this much remodeling, right, how do we still make the finding it's Class I versus another class? Because it's pretty extensive, what's been done to the house from its original configuration.
Yeah, so what they're, what they look at are the materials, the craftsmanship, the, you know, when we look at sufficiency of integrity, you know, the location of the structure, obviously, there's been components that have been replaced and reconstructed. In this case, they're looking at the, they looked at the limestone, Arizona limestone tile or stone that's on the exterior, so all those factors are really kind of how we evaluate it. But you're right, it has had some restoration, a lot of restoration.
And that included restoration to the pool as well, right?
Correct.
So is, is the pool considered part of the historic criteria when you look at a historic home?
You can, you can look at that as one of the contributing features, and when you're looking at the nomination, so if you go to page 12, we define which portions of the property would be contributing to the character-defining historic features, and so you can see the, let's see, swimming pool was excluded from the features that are contributing, so it's on the second list.
I think it's fantastic that we have so many people in the city of Palm Springs that take incredible pride in their home, they want to recreate their home in a historic heritage. I think it lends itself to the city of Palm Springs, especially since we have become kind of a, I'll call it, a modernism capital, and it's great that people are on that bandwagon to do it. I will make a motion to support it if there's no more discussion. I just had concerns about, I just had concerns about the amount of reconstruction.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. We actually have to open the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
Do, Councilmember Kors or Holstich, do you have any questions?
Okay, great. So I'd like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and the public is invited to speak on this issue for up to two minutes. Do we have any speakers at this time?
Stephen Kealan, you're live with the city council, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Hi, thank you. This is Stephen Kealan. I'm vice president of the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation and the author of the Class I nomination. I'm representing the owners who couldn't be here tonight, but they're very much in support of this. I don't have a lot to add because the staff report was so good, but I just want to say that it was such a treat to work on this, because I really have always loved this, this house, and I really thought it was gone, that it was going to be torn down, it was so close to demolition. But really, I think it's such a great project, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Mr. Kealan. Does, do any councilmembers have questions for Mr. Kealan? Thank you, Mr. Kealan. City clerk, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, then, we will close the public hearing. Are there additional comments or questions from council? Councilmember Kors?
Yeah, I just want to, in addition to the really great staff reports, so thank you, staff, I thought the nomination was really worth reading, and I always want to encourage the public, it's such a wealth of information about architecture and history, the reports that Stephen and that group do, and really worth reading, I really enjoyed reading this one, and when our agendas are unpacked, I actually have time to read these fully and look at the pictures, and this was a really, really, really good one, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, do we have a motion?
Well, I prematurely did it, but I will make a motion to approve, thank you.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion from Councilmember Woods and a second from Councilmember Kors. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes, and the mayor has stepped out briefly, and I don't know, is she, City Attorney, is she allowed to record her vote when she returns?
No, I would recommend we go forward with the next item.
Okay, great. So the motion passes for, to, well, four with one abstention.
Absent, yeah.
The next item is item 2C, a public hearing to consider a request by Jerry G. Johnson of VIP Motor Cars for a 12-month review of a conditional use permit for an off-site vehicle storage facility located at 4193 East Matthew Drive. Do we have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Mayor Protem and members of council. The item that you have before you, item number 2C, is relative to a 12-month review of a conditional use permit for an auto storage lot. Just to give you a little bit of background in terms of why this item is before you, the item is, as I had mentioned, for an off-site storage lot that serves the VIP Motors dealerships, which are located on East Palm Canyon. The auto storage lot itself is located further to the south on Matthew Drive. The use requires a conditional use permit. The planning commission originally denied the conditional use permit. The item was called forward to City Council. At that point, City Council approved it, but they did add additional conditions of approval, and one of those conditions required that the City Council review the use after 12 months of operation. The applicant obtained their building permit and completed construction in April of 2021, and so that brings us to the date here. In terms of the lot itself, we have the map here on the screen, the aerial, showing the VIP Motor Dealerships on East Palm Canyon, and the location of the auto storage lot on Matthew Drive. The image to the left is the auto storage lot as improved. You'll notice there is fencing, there is landscaping relative to the auto storage lot. In terms of the conditions that were added by the City Council, in particular, engineering condition number 33 required a number of safety improvements that were requested by the neighborhood, and also by City Council members. One of those was relative to additional signage for the bus stop that is there on Matthew Drive, as there are small children in the complex and in the adjacent area who do use the bus, and there were concerns about the additional auto traffic and safety. Excuse me. In addition, there were requests that the engineer look at additional pedestrian safety improvements, including crosswalks, to designate those properly, to have adequate signage for those, and any other pedestrian improvements as required by the city engineer. In terms of our findings relative to this 12-month review, we find that the application is in conformance to the conditions of approval. The operations are in conformance. We provide a detailed assessment of those in attachment number six here to your staff report. In terms of the pedestrian safety improvements, the school bus signage has been installed that is in place. However, we have delayed the installation of the crosswalks and the associated signage. The reason for that is there is the Line 41 drainage project that is currently under construction. If you've driven on East Palm Canyon, you've seen the amount of dirt that's being moved. That will necessitate certain changes to Matthew Drive in terms of digging up some of the asphalt, making drainage improvements under Matthew Drive, Linden Way, Cherokee, et cetera. Because of those improvements, we delayed the installation of the crosswalks. Essentially, the city does not want to do that work twice. We understand that there are concerns now about pedestrian safety, but again, looking at the improvements that are going to be made there in the near future, in the short term, we felt it best to delay those until after the county finishes its work on Line 41. We also looked at any code enforcement complaints. You'll see there was one, but it was not relative to the off-site storage lot. One of the things that we didn't note in the staff report is we did get a complaint from the neighborhood organization about the speed on Matthew Drive. I think this was back in December of 2021. What we did to address those concerns is we sent a letter to the dealerships indicating that they needed to monitor the speed of their vehicles. Also, Sergeant Galvin from the Police Department installed the speed monitoring signs, which indicates to drivers their speed. And so those items were put in place to address the concerns of the neighborhood. Speaking about the work that the city will do, we do have in the staff report images and site plans showing where the crosswalks will go. Again, those will be installed once Line 41 is more or less complete. Our recommendation to you this evening is to go ahead and approve this 12-month review without any further review needed, as it is conformance to the conditions of approval. However, if you do have concern about the pedestrian safety improvements, what I might recommend is that we do receive and file a report to City Council once those improvements are complete, so that way you have a record that we have satisfied the conditions of approval, and that the pedestrian safety standards have been implemented. And so again, if that's something that you would like to add to this review, we would be more than happy to do that. That concludes my report to you this evening. We do have the applicant, Mr. Johnson, who will join us via Zoom later on, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much. Do we have a sense of when that, section 14, or section 41, sorry?
Line 41.
Line 41.
Drainage project. I was afraid you were going to ask me that. I don't have the exact date of when we expect that to be complete. I would expect those improvements to be in place within the next 12 months, is my best guess.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions, does Mr. Johnson wish to speak?
If we could have IT bring Mr. Johnson via Zoom.
Good evening. I don't see my face, and I've got a face for radio, so that's great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Jerry Johnson, and I'm representing VIP Motor Cars Limited, which has been at the corner of East Palm Canyon and Cherokee since 1973. And I want to thank you, first of all, for allowing us to continue to grow in the great city of Palm Springs. The vehicle storage lot that's being reviewed this evening has enabled us to continue to grow and improve. We recently completed a brand-new facility for our Hyundai franchise. If you haven't seen it, please drive by, or better yet, stop in for a visit. By the way, I'd be remiss if I didn't tout the Hyundai product line, which includes the electric Ioniq 5, which was just named World Car of the Year. Our Mercedes-Benz operations continue to grow, as does Mercedes' Sprinter van business, which experienced records the past two months in succession. The storage lot we're reviewing is critical to our continued growth. A relatively new luxury brand, Genesis, is doing remarkably well. We will be submitting plans shortly, and I look forward to an expeditious review of our plans through the Building Department for converting our former Infiniti building into a beautiful home for Genesis. The storage lot, which is between a body shop to the west and a Riverside County water-retention project to the east, I think turned out great, and according to the conditions of approval. We developed it and have been well-maintaining it for the past year. The property's owners tell me they have had a number of people comment just on how great it looks. The storage lot is critical for us to be able to operate effectively today, and we need it for, to have room to grow in the future. So I want to thank you for allowing us to develop the storage area, and to have this opportunity to review the project, and I'm available to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any public testimony on this?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson, I don't think you need a rebuttal to no comment.
Not at all.
All right. There being no other speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to state that I would appreciate just the receive-and-file, and in general, on these types of issues, I didn't realize that this was going to come back to council in this way, and I would just suggest to my colleagues that maybe we do have it more of a receive-and-file basis in the future. So it is important, these issues are important, but we don't necessarily need this level of scrutiny.
Thank you. And thank you for those comments. I concur completely. Are there any other comments, sir? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
All right. Vote, please.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0.
All right. The next item is 2D, a public hearing regarding the Community Block Grant 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan and Budget. I'd like to ask for a staff report.
Mayor Protem and council members, I would like to note before starting that the amount, the total amount being requested for approval, $430,000, is only an estimate, as we have not yet received a formal approval or notification of an award from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. However, they have let us know that they're running behind, and they have extended the deadline for some middle of the annual action plan until August, so they are giving us some extra time there. That being said, we do believe the $430,000 is a conservative estimate. Last year's award was $431,000, and the year prior to that was $449,000. Adopting the resolution to approve the CDBG annual action plan and making adjustments based on the actual award, and authorizing the city manager to execute the sub-recipient agreement is, while we're not prevented from doing that at this time, is we can make those adjustments at a later point in time, if necessary, based on the actual award that we receive. That being said, the draft annual action plan proposes to allocate the $430,000 for shade structures in the amount of $286,000, and that would be over playgrounds at Demuth Park and Barista Park. And it should be noted that if public facilities are not within the boundaries of the low-income areas, the facility will have to principally benefit a limited clientele, such as seniors, homeless individuals, severely disabled adults, or abused children. That's to say, CDBG funds can be spent outside of the low or moderate income areas, however, they have to be for targeted populations. So in the case of sidewalks, roads, and parks adjacent to, but not inside of, the low-mod areas, those would not satisfy the requirements, as they do not principally benefit that targeted clientele. And a map showing the low-income areas were provided in your staff report in attachment four. In addition to the shade structures, $10,000 is being recommended for the city's home repair program, which is an amount we've budgeted pretty much consistently every year for the last few years. And to give you an idea of how the home program has been utilized, it really has been up and down. In fiscal year 20, 12 households were assisted for an expenditure of $13,000. In fiscal year 21, one household was assisted for an expenditure of $98, and this is largely due to COVID, as the clientele are seniors, low-income seniors, and was very likely they did not want contractors doing work coming in and out of their house during the COVID. And for fiscal year 22, year-to-date, seven households have been assisted for a total expenditure of $4,000 at this time. However, I did just today sign off on another $1,200 assistance that had been requested, so there's, there is good use for that. In addition, the recommended allocation includes $48,000 for fair housing. And to receive the CDBG funds, the city has to agree to affirmatively further fair housing. And in fact, the state of California recently enacted AB 686, requiring municipal agencies to further, to affirmatively further fair housing as part of their duties as a public agency. The contract with the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County is to assist the city with this responsibility. And again, that is for, that was for $48,000 annually. And to give you a sense of where those dollars are going, based on their second-quarter report of FY '22, they have mediated 310 landlord-tenant issues. They've counseled 95 people. They've achieved 25 conciliations, excuse me, and assisted four people with cases involving discrimination, for a total of 430 people that were assisted. And as part of the operations for the CDBG program, $86,000 of the 430 is being recommended for administration to operate the program, work with the HUD representatives, and submit reports, and keep us in line with all the requirements that HUD is providing us. So these allocations were previously discussed at the February 24th and March 10th City Council meetings. The draft annual action plan has been available for public review since March 14th. No comments were received, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Jay, thank you. Are there any questions for Jay, or any other members of staff? Councilmember Woods?
Thanks, Jay, for getting that information on how we can spend or not spend the money. I know we've gone through this enormous times, but just in the future, when we look at CDBG, so just my understanding, if the money is to be used outside of the actually-defined areas from attachment four, it has to be very specific to seniors? And can you run through that again?
Yes. It's not just seniors. It is the groups that HUD seeks to serve: low-income individuals, seniors, homeless individuals, special needs individuals, migrant workers, abused children. I think we're also on that list. So there's, there's a few different types of individuals and groups that the funds can go towards.
So just, so I'm clear, so if we have a missing sidewalk or something that is outside the area, but it serves seniors or disability, we cannot use the money for that? I'm confused.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
It's, the sidewalk would be, it's not targeted towards that group like a, say, a facility for disabled individuals, but it's available to the general public to use that sidewalk.
So in the recommendations that we've done with shade structures and restrooms, and those are considered targeted to that group, or because it's within the geographic area that's defined as low-income?
Those are within the geographic area.
Got it.
Defined as low or moderate income.
Fantastic, thank you.
Protem.
Thank you, Jay. I just had a question for you about the home repair program. On, it's page three of the staff report. It mentions that the annual $1,500 grant excludes first-year disaster preparedness items and any code enforcement abatement. Can you just explain why those things are excluded?
Page three, did you say?
Yes, under the section rehabilitation, it's at the bottom.
That refers to the annual grant, so if they're receiving a grant on an ongoing basis, those items are excluded, but they are provided at the initial time that the recipient receives that grant. So they can, it's a one-time type of award for those recipients.
So if someone is dealing with code enforcement issues, and they come to you, come to the city for assistance, they can use it, it's just if they get this one-time grant?
That's correct. They would also have to qualify under the They would also have to qualify under the program as being low income. But yes, first-time code enforcement and different code enforcement issues can also be applied for, so that is possible.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify for the public a little bit, if code enforcement were to go to a home where it was a low-income person and say, you know, your yard needs to have certain repairs done, they could go and apply to get assistance to make those repairs in their property?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to add, under our program, though, it targets seniors, low-income seniors.
Low-income seniors, right. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions, are there comments? Excuse me, this is a public hearing, so we need to, is there any public testimony?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we will close the public hearing. Are there comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the item.
And I will second it.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Kors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
The next item is 2E, adoption of an ordinance authorizing military equipment use policy. Staff report, please. I think that's going to come from Chief Mills.
Well, good evening, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Pro Tem Garner, and council members. Tonight, we're asking you to read and approve our policy 709, which deals with military-type equipment. The possession and deployment of military-type equipment is an important matter, one we as the police agency take very seriously. We believe the community has the right to know the type of equipment the police department possesses and should have a voice in the matter. This policy, codified by council ordinance, brings the community into knowledge and understanding about the number and type of equipment we possess. Unfortunately, in a heavily armed society, as we have observed nationwide and locally here, the police are tasked with dealing with violence and sometimes violent people. If you people are intent on causing harm, and the police are tasked with this unusual circumstance of defending the greater community, in order to protect the community, equipment is needed. I wish that our officers did not have to run towards gunfire, but unfortunately, that is not the case. They do so regularly, and it is my responsibility to make sure that they're equipped, protected, and sometimes adequately armed. Having said that, it is also my belief that the community has the right and responsibility to know our capabilities and govern those capabilities through you. AB 481 was passed by the legislature in September of 2021. Governor Newsom signed the bill into law, which was effective January 1, 2022. In compliance with AB 41, I present to you our inventory of equipment and weapons as directed by the bill and ask for you to hold a public hearing and receive testimony. Then, should you agree, approve an ordinance codifying our policy. Public policy, or police policy 709 of our policies manual details how we account for the equipment and what types of equipment we have. It generally does not determine how we apply the use of that equipment. That would be other policies that we would need to bring forward and vet at the appropriate time. The application of equipment is important to our understanding of the expectations of our community. Based on the feedback of council members through this process of collaborating and working with you, I want to make sure that a couple of things were noted. First of all, I modified the language in the policy that you were previously given. We will repost that policy effective tomorrow on our website to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to take a look at the new language. There was concern over the language of "not limited to." In other words, it would give the police department a little bit more discretion. That was removed from the policy in Section 709.1.1. Also, and we improved the language under 709.6, under coordination with other jurisdictions. The goal of the language change is to make it clear, it is more clear that other agencies must adhere to our policies while working in our city. This creates some questions, however, that we would need to think through and discuss. First of all, how do they know what our policy is, if they're coming from a different jurisdiction? And in exigent circumstances, such as that took place on October 8, is not the time to debate the types of policies that we have in place. And they may come with equipment that we have not had in our possession because whether it's a larger agency or an agency with a different expectation. Those are items that we need to work through with you, get your understanding, and be prepared to write the policies as desired by our city council. I certainly would entertain any questions that you might have and answer them to the best of my ability.
All right. Are there questions for the chief? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you so much, chief. One of the other questions I had, and I appreciate you working on that language, include, including "not limited to." I think one of the great things about this is that we have, are really able to look at it critically, and I think that's an important part. I'm also curious what the history of the uses of these items. So this is probably the first time that many of us in the public have seen this list of items that our police department has. It would be helpful, I think, to know how often these items have been used in the past. Are some of them just in case? You know, if you can either explain that or provide that for us in written form at a later date, I think that would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful to do it in written form to you at a later date, primarily because some of these items we rarely use, and you're right, it's just in case. Other items, such as the armored vehicle, might get used more often, including in other cities that borrow our vehicle. And there are different types of use for the vehicle. For instance, training, as well as deployment for exigent circumstances such as violence or a person barricaded with a firearm. So I would want to be accurate in how I describe that to you. I know one of the questions that came up from some was that the use of CS gas and how often we use that. And I checked with my staff, and we have never used it, to their knowledge, in a crowd control situation. And so I think that's important. Just one more comment, if I can, on the use of the armored vehicles. The categories of training, information are important to have because we need to, A, train with those vehicles, and then inform people the use of those vehicles so that they can make up their own minds of whether or not it's appropriate for a police department to have these vehicles. The second piece, though, is we have to anticipate what things could take place. Like, for instance, at the movie awards thing that takes place here in Palm Springs, you know, we have large crowds, we have the potential of high-value targets, and so we do deploy those vehicles in anticipation of potential problems. But one of the things that I've written into the policy that you'll be able to see as soon as we get it to you is that it cannot be used for just regular patrol duties. I don't want to see an armored vehicle rolling around the city of Palm Springs unless it's being used for a specific purpose. And so those are some of the things that I certainly can get to you, as well as if council desires a complete list of every weapon that we have. But that's, you know, it's not mandated by law, but it is, we do track those things pretty consistently.
Thank you so much, chief. I appreciate that clarification. The last question I have is just, are some of these items, I was surprised that we have, and I'm wondering if any of these items can be phased out over time and if you have a recommendation on that?
There are, I do believe that there are certain firearms that we are able to phase out, or at least phase out some of those firearms. Like, you know, in the past, they had required, they had acquired weapons through the 1033 program, which is the government, federal government's program to get equipment to local police agencies. I don't know if that's the best use of those weapons, and I think that some of those, yes, can be phased out. Pair down the number of firearms that we have and have available, but without reducing the readiness and the integrity of what we need to do as a police agency to protect our city.
Are there other questions for the chief? Chief, I have a couple of questions. The AB 481 initiated this process that we're going through now, which I applaud. It gives us much more information as to what we're doing. In terms of policy, what is changing in the way that the Palm Springs Police Department is deploying its use of these types of equipment and weapons, if anything?
So that's what I was referring to in my opening statement to you, and so thank you for following up with that, Madam Mayor. It's one thing to account for the equipment that we have and then ask for permission to purchase or use the equipment. It's a different matter of how the equipment is applied. And those are separate policies that may or may not be in place. And I think that one of the things that's important for us as a police agency to do is to make sure that we have very clear policies written to ensure that the use of the equipment is in line with what the expectations of council and our community is.
So you're going to be at a later date after you have completed your review of existing procedures, identifying what needs to be changed, if anything, what gaps exist, if any?
That is correct, and to make sure that, again, that equipment is used appropriately.
Thank you. Councilmember Kors.
Thank you, and thank you, chief, for taking some of the suggestions from other cities that I think probably several of us sent you. And obviously, you know, the new state law, I think it's good that cities will have to adopt policies because it's important that we know the risk our police officers are at, and that the public knows what we have and how it's going to be used, and as clear as we can. And obviously, your judgment is so important in this. One of the things I still have a question on, and in my 22 years since I first moved here, I've never, you know, seen tear gas used, and it was great to hear that it hasn't. But in what situations, in your view, is it appropriate to use it? Is it? And is that clear in your mind in the policy? You know, it's not just for dispersment, it's dispersment if there's, you know, significant risk of, you know, severe injury. Just wanted to get your sense of what the policy should be, and is that how this is currently written?
Yeah, I think one of the things, Councilmember Kors, that you'll find is that our policy needs to be extraordinarily clear. I don't think that it is clear enough at this point on the deployment of CS gas, that when we use it, it is under very strict circumstances. People are specially trained of using the gas. For instance, they have to do calculations on the size of the room and how much gas to put in the room so that we don't injure people. Those things are technical and very, takes a lot of skill. We have used it for barricaded gunman situations where we're trying to move people through a house or to get them out of a house. So that has been used under those circumstances. Where we don't want to see gas used are in crowds, where we could potentially get stampedes of people or injured innocent people who are there to exercise their First Amendment rights. We need to be very clear under what circumstances that that equipment can be used in those situations. And I think that's the goal of this conversation on AB 481, is to make sure that everybody understands the rules of when we can use equipment and under what circumstances and who authorizes that equipment.
Thank you.
Other questions for the chief?
Thank you, chief. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much, chief, for this, and very much appreciate you including some of those comments and best practices from other cities. So I followed along as you did your opening statement, but I'm a very visual person, so I just want to make sure we get you what you need. So I know you had flagged for us to discuss the use with other agencies. So do you have a recommendation there about what we should approve, what language, based on what other cities have done?
Yes, so for those council members who sent me language from other cities, you know, it was kind of interesting because I know of at least one city that they used our policy as the example of what they wanted to see in their city. And so, you know, we all share and borrow from each other, and so we were proud that they were actually used us. A member of the ACLU called me and said, hey, you know, we're using part of your policy for this, and I thought that was great. But to answer specifically your question on coordination with other jurisdictions, what we have written is that whoever, I'm just trying to skip through without reading the whole thing. Military equipment used by other jurisdictions that are providing mutual aid to this department or operating in conjunction in a law enforcement capacity with this department shall comply with the military equipment policy of the Palm Springs Police Department, period. In addition to that, there's another paragraph below that that was modeled after San Diego's. We took it very closely to that, which goes into great detail about the use of that equipment, including our officers using equipment in other jurisdictions. We still want to hold them to the standard of our department, as well as if other departments come here, that they would have to adhere to our policies. Again, that does open up some other questions of what do we do in exigent circumstances. However, I understand the purpose and the direction of the policy. So my recommendation is what has been written up to this point.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if you were recommending changes to that or not.
Yes, I am recommending changes. I will get you and the rest of the council members, well, I will put it on our website to allow everybody to have equal access to it and make sure that you have a link to get to that.
Thank you, and really appreciate your work and your leadership. And I know sometimes civil rights and, you know, some of these issues are put separately or at odds, but really appreciate our police department's respect of civil rights and civil liberties and the way that our police departments worked in partnerships to ensure that Palm Springs is the safest place to have, you know, freedom of speech and protest and assembly. It's really amazing how the police departments worked to allow people to peacefully assemble. So appreciate all the leadership there and that we haven't, you know, had a lot of issues with some of this military use, at least in those settings. So thank you for your work.
Any other questions from the chief? All right. Seeing no other questions, do we have any public testimony?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then, public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would actually like to defer to the city attorney on this because since there are changes that Chief Mills made, I'd feel more comfortable officially voting on this once we've seen those changes. And I'm just curious what the next steps would be if council also agrees, if we can move forward after we've fully read it.
I believe you can. The new state law says that as long as we have commenced proceedings to adopt this policy by ordinance before May, then you're in compliance. And as I mentioned at the last council meeting, I believe that at that time you did commence those proceedings. So if the council would be more comfortable waiting to see the exact language and then adopting this ordinance, you can do that, I believe.
I would ask the chief if that would create any issues for you and for the department.
Madam Mayor, it creates no issues at all. We'd be more than happy to get this language changed and make sure that you have it so you can intelligently look at it and give us your thoughts.
All right, thank you. And I'll second that motion. Vote, please.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Holstech?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item is to aff adoption of an ordinance modifying and adopting a comprehensive fee schedule for fiscal year 2022-23. Staff report, please.
Today for a public hearing to implement a consumer price index increase and adopt the comprehensive fee schedule for fiscal year 22-23. This, this fee schedule is a lot of work, and we, I want to thank all the departments. This fee schedule goes out to each department to make any modifications or corrections. So it was a group effort. And I just want to give you a little background. In 1819, we had an increase, a CPI increase of 2.5%. In 1920, we had 2.3%. And we waived the, due to COVID-19, we waived the fee increases in 2021 and 2122. This revised comprehensive, comprehensive fee schedule includes a 7.5% increase in fees. This will bring approximately a total of 431,000 in revenues to the general fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and we do have some department staff here that have the fees in their departments. If you have any questions, they will be able to answer those.
Thank you. Let me start with a very straightforward question, and as much for the public as anyone else. My understanding is user fees need to cover our costs, and they cannot be used to increase revenues. They are by law required to be sufficient to cover costs, but no more. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what process have you gone through to try to make sure we're hitting that very difficult mark?
We have, the city anticipates that we want to have a fee, a fee study done every five years. So in 1920, we did have a fee study completed, and at that time, there was-
1920?
Oh, I'm sorry. FY 1920. I know, everybody always says it, I, because I'm working with these numbers all the time. So fiscal year 1920, we did have the fee study done by a professional consultant, and so that will be good for five years, and we'll have another study done to make sure that we are in target with the fee increases.
Other questions for Nancy? I'm not seeing any other questions. So if there are no other questions, then we will ask, we will open the public hearing. And are there any speakers from the public?
Gretchen Gutierrez?
Good evening. Gosh, it's so nice to be back in person and see everybody live. So exciting. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Gretchen Gutierrez. I'm the CEO of the Desert Valley Builders Association. Our office has been engaged for the last several weeks with Ms. Polly and her staff on this very item, and we've had written correspondence submitted to you. It's in your packet this evening if you wanted to pull it up. It's Attachment D, pages 16 and 17, is, is our letter to the city. I want to note that several of the items in that correspondence have been since resolved with the city staff, working with our office and saying, yes, we needed to adjust some things. So some of those things have already been put to rest, and we've reached a conclusion of happiness, I should say, on, on a couple of those items. But tonight, what I'm here to actually talk about is the CPI index that you are using and adopting. Excuse me. As was referenced several years ago, we urged the city to look at adopting an annual adjustment tied to a CPI indexing, which is very typical among municipalities and agencies. You all, as a city, did adopt it in 2020, 2021, gosh, these years are flying by, to take an annual CPI adjustment on the off years between when you did an annual fee study, or, excuse me, the five-year fee study. The adoption of that resolution that you all took was tied to the CPI index, which was for the L.A., Long Beach, and Anaheim region. At one time, Riverside, Ontario, and San Bernardino were part of that indexing. But that index was split in late 2017, 2018, and we now actually have our own index strata here for Riverside, San Bernardino, and Ontario. So we'd like to, first of all, have you go back at some point and take a look at your resolution and realize that we'd like to have you look at us. We are a unique area out here in the Coachella Valley and in Riverside County, San Bernardino, and we feel that that is more applicable to measuring apples to apples and oranges to oranges. That ties into my comment tonight specifically about the report, that currently, their staff report is recommending using the all items rate calculation, where most agencies typically use the core rate calculation, which more closely pertains to the industries that we represent as our association and the ones that are across the board that you're looking at. If you make an adjustment on the numbers that you're seeing tonight to look at that different methodology, it is going to make a change in the numbers overall at the end result. It will make a net change. That's point one. Point two is, you've heard Ms. Polly reference the increases that have gone on the last couple of years and the holding of the increases for the last two years due to COVID. We appreciate that. We also understand that you need to be made whole and be workable and functioning as a city and that be compensated accordingly, but you're being asked to take a seven and a half percent increase as the staff recommendation tonight. We are getting hit by inflation, just like everyone else is. We're getting hit by supply chain issues, worker shortages. You name it, our industry is heavily impacted by it, just as every other industry is, not just here in the Coachella Valley, not just here in Palm Springs, but throughout the state. We'd like to have you consider, and I know it's a big ask, but we'd like to have you consider a lesser amount than the seven and a half percent interest. I do not have a recommendation for you as to the percentage we'd like you to, to consider, but we would like you to consider it because the industry is still, of course, trying to recover. We're trying to build houses as fast as we can. We're trying to build apartments for affordable housing as fast as we can. We're running into a lot of issues at this point in time, so we're looking for consideration on that. And with that, thank you very much. I know I exceeded my time, but thank you.
Are there any other public speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then I will close the public hearing. I would like to ask staff to respond to the points that were raised by Ms. Gutierrez.
Yes, I've been asked to, to respond. You know, I believe that from a legal perspective, the, the council is authorized to use the, the Los Angeles Anaheim index, which is what the seven and a half percent represents. With regard to the categories, the, the reasons staff in, in cooperation with the city attorney's office chose the all items was because, quite frankly, the, the services that the city will be providing with these fees, whether it's construction services or personnel services, are represented by all items. They don't take out housing and food, which is what the DVBA, their category would, would exclude from the percentage. So that was the justification for using the all items, as well as the L.A.-Anaheim area. If the council wishes, from a policy perspective, to adopt a lower rate, you're certainly able to do that. I wouldn't recommend that you adopt a higher rate, but if you decide as a policy perspective to adopt a lower percentage, you certainly can.
I'm not sure I follow if we now have a index that is targeted much more to our region than L.A., Long Beach, and, and Riverside, why we would continue to use the metropolitan L.A. index. I do appreciate pointing out that we can, but a sense of fairness would seem that we would want to use the index closer to home.
And that would be 6.9% rather than the 7.5, and it's not a huge monetary difference.
Any other questions or comments from, ah, Councilmember Coors? Thank you.
I appreciate it's not a big monetary difference. So what is, what is the reasoning you picked one over the other? Just that we historically have done that?
And because that was in our policy that, that we adopted previously.
Yeah, okay. I just want to see if there's anything else. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Woods?
I want to thank staff for working on the letter from the DVBA, the Desert Valley Builders Association. Can you just briefly go through kind of how we resolved some of their issues? Because they had two pages of issues, I believe it was. Was it, was it just oversight on our part, or?
It was oversight on our part. We were, this is a manual process. It was Excel schedules that were passed down, and so I do have some new staff, and some of these items were overlooked or the formula errors were in there. And I really appreciate Gretchen and her staff working and being patient with us during this process.
Okay, great.
So I think the only big issue was the, the first item, which is what percent did you want to use, 7.5 or 6.9?
Great, thank you. Thank you for all that work.
Mayor Protem?
I, I am interested as well in using our, our index. I just think since we do have one now, I understand that it was in the policy before, but it seems like something that we should correct, so I'm in, I'm supportive of that.
Is this a resolution change, Jeff, do you think?
I believe if that's the direction council wishes to provide, we, you can give us that direction and still adopt it tonight.
I can't speak for everybody else, but I agree with the Mayor Protem. We have an index that's appropriate to our community. That's the one we should use. So I will make a motion that we adopt the staff report with the change to use the CPI index that's appropriate to the inland empire and that therefore the increase would be 6.9 as opposed to the 7.5. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further comment?
If I can, Mayor.
No.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to raise, you know, I was on city council when we first did the fee study, and so I remember that process, but I'm just wondering, and this isn't the time now, but to think through how we do fees, especially for some resident services. For example, I've received a number of requests from nonprofits to rent out meeting space with city facilities that we already staff, and the costs are prohibitively high for nonprofits, and we have no policy to waive fees for nonprofits like other cities do, and there's such a need for meeting space for organizations. I've even actually paid for the rental fee for a number of organizations just so that they can operate, like, for example, a new moms group in the city of Palm Springs. And then, you know, so I've heard that a lot throughout my years on city council. And then also just fees for residents. I think we've talked a lot about how to subsidize services for residents and not charge them fees for renting out space or having small meetings or using different services. And I would just love us to think more liberally about which services we maybe do not need to charge a fee for, which ones. Some of these fee revenues, I know we're, they're at cost, and we're getting compensated for our work, but often it's, you know, city staff is already there, or it's not that much additional work for us. So just wondering if we can think about a way as we invest in more quality of life amenities for residents in the future for council members who will be here, maybe when we do a fee study, or maybe if staff can bring this back in the budget, right, is thinking through just how to subsidize some of these fees for, for low-income folks. You know, if you're going to the, want to go to the pool, but it costs $3 or $4 per time or per kid, right? That could be really limiting. So I'd just love for us to think through doing those fees differently, especially for parks and rec programs. But Gretchen knows, I, you know, I think I opposed the fee increase last time on housing, and we just really need to work together to get more housing built in Palm Springs. So I know that the, some of these fees are not really the prohibitive cost for that, but would love to work to reduce costs overall, including on fees. So I support the motion on the floor to change the study that we use, the comparative market, but would love to see how else we can reduce fees.
I do have Jeannie Case here. She can discuss some of the rental, room rentals. She did decrease some of them, and if you would like her to come up here and talk about some of the fees, she is available.
That'd be great. Thank you. The benefit of being on Zoom is I couldn't see my colleagues' faces if it was a yes or a no, so I'll just say yes, please.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I, as well as you, have learned a lot about the parks and recreation fees, and I think that there, there's a lot of opportunity there to reorganize, take a look at it. There are some rooms that are missing on, on the rate. There's some, there's some rates that, that I, I was surprised at as well. And so I think it would be a great opportunity to really dive deep into the recreation fees specifically. At the library, we do have a nonprofit rate, which is 50% of our room rental, but as you might know, we only have one room, and so we're really limited in our meeting space. And we, that's, that's another opportunity. But there is a nonprofit rate, but looking at it, it is cheaper for just a resident to rent. But you're right, the rates are, are high. I mean, for just, like you said, a moms group trying to come in and just have a meeting, there's not an opportunity for them to get a free space in their community centers. So I, I'm with you on that one.
You know, I think this is a, a large discussion and one that's somewhat separate from the kinds of fees that we're talking about for user fees here. And I really appreciate Councilmember Holstech raising the question. Perhaps we could ask staff to take a look at our practices and policies with relation to nonprofit and community organizations that are charged fees for various uses of city facilities. Mayor Protem?
I just want to state that I support that review because we do lack a lot of community spaces. That would be helpful.
So is there any further discussion for the item that's on, in front of us? All right, seeing none, roll, call the vote, please.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstech?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have one more item left on the agenda, and that's going to be a discussion of our city boards and commissions, who are a few minutes short of eight. Is it the pleasure of the council that we continue on and move through this, or would you like to take a short break before we begin this discussion? Break? We've got at least one request for a break, and that's enough. So we will take a 10-minute break and start back at a couple of minutes after eight. Thank you. Thank you.
So we have residents and stakeholders. We often have external partners, sometimes with jurisdiction, like the state or federal government, sometimes just neighboring entities. We often have numerous city departments, committees, and commissions. So what we wanted to do is, looking through that lens, target improvements across that cycle. We have made a number of changes already. So for instance, the city council had shifted away from some of the liaison roles. We had a handful of committees that were functioning. In terms of residents, we wanted to utilize more working groups and we've started to do that, for instance, with the vacation rental policy, inclusionary zoning and others, where we are assembling groups of people to really get involved, roll up their sleeves, and help us directly make some of the decisions. One of the other processes we wanted to review was those of our boards and commissions. I presented at a previous meeting, just from a high level, some of our challenges and opportunities. And I'll refer to a couple of those at a high level before we dig in. So some of our challenges, commission structures and authority can vary from commission to commission. In fact, I will generally probably just start to say commissions, although recognizing that right now we really have boards and commissions and at least one entity, a committee with yet another name. One of the things we could do is just start to call them all commissions to simplify things. Some lack strategic direction provided by council. So similar to what we did with some visioning, I think there may be some opportunities to integrate boards and commissions into a similar process to make sure we all remain aligned. Sometimes confusion about roles and responsibilities, lack of onboarding and training, and lack of integration and communication, sometimes even with one another. So the opportunities that arise from some of those challenges are really to streamline our commission structures, review, amend, and clarify roles and responsibilities, integrate commissions in the priority setting, expand communication through scheduled activities, and create a really robust onboarding and training materials and process that would not just be for commissions, but also staff that provide support for commissions. So throughout the rest of the presentation, we're going to go through some of these in detail. Of course, we're eager to hear from council on any of this. If you have questions, if you have comments. Everything is structured in terms of challenges and recommendations, but please just note that those recommendations are really suggestions. Of course, we defer to council on any final decisions or to enhance that direction so that we can bring back something for you to consider at a future meeting. So the first one I want to zero in on are, there are currently 14 boards and commissions, most of which are created to advise council on policy, although sometimes there's administrative work. So some tasks are delegated to commissions. So for instance, with architectural review or certain planning commission decisions. There are a number of programs actually across the board where sometimes those commissions are actually doing administrative work. But I think we have an opportunity to realign some of our ordinance and bylaws, at least as a level set, to really focus on the advisory role that I just mentioned for commissions that have that responsibility. But some others, it might be more appropriate to delegate those tasks on a case-by-case basis. That doesn't have to be individual initiatives. Sometimes that can be for a year or ongoing for a particular program. But again, the recommendation for your consideration is to kind of have a level set. We do have some enabling ordinances that have very active verbs to go out and do things, and others that are strictly advisory, and it might be helpful to kind of realign those and add back the delegation so that council really understands what of those items are going to be carried out on an ongoing basis and what more on a case-by-case basis. And please, just interrupt if there are questions or comments.
Mayor Protam, excuse me.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, at least for me, it might be nice to go one by one. I think this is, I really like this recommendation. I think it would be very helpful to be able to just have a better sense of what everyone does. I think right now, it's really confusing, and the public is confused, the commissions are confused. So to have kind of one standard way of doing things would be beneficial.
I concur. And again, to councilmembers, Coors and Holstidge, while we're in presentation mode, I can't see you, so if there's any time that you want to speak up, please do so.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, for that reminder. Well, Aiden's also gone, so I can't make faces at him anymore. So I agree, I agree with this. One thing is, you know, maybe calling them all commissions is probably a good idea, but maybe we need to have some distinction for the ones, we could say that have, you know, some administrative duties that have been delegated, but actually, I'm thinking especially for the ones where their decisions are final unless we call it up, that, you know, there are 700 filers, right? There's a couple that are, which are, if it's a state forum, we have to disclose any potential conflicts. There are some that actually have some legal authority, not just advisory, even though it can be appealed to council, like we saw earlier with the nightclub. And maybe that title needs to be different, so it's clearer that some are advisory commissions and some aren't necessarily just advisory commissions. And maybe advisory commissions should be used in the ones that are solely advisory. But just something I wanted to raise, because there is a distinction with those who actually do have final decision-making under the law unless we call it up or the applicant appeals.
Very good. Shall we move on to the second challenge?
Great. Great suggestion. We will look at whether or not there's a way to distinguish between those that are more strictly advisory and those that do have some administrative delegated tasks. Challenge two, boards and commissions vary in size currently from five to 19 members. Some of the larger commissions sometimes struggle with attendance continuity and efficiency. So we've heard this both. I should have mentioned in the beginning, we did solicit feedback both from boards and commissions during the visioning process. We also had conversations with staffs, staff that support commissions, and since the visioning sessions, we've had ongoing conversations that all contribute to these challenges and recommendations. So we have heard both from commission members and from staff that support commissions, that sometimes the large attendance makes orderly progress on certain items more difficult. So one thing you may consider is to reduce commissions to five or seven members, potentially excluding the airport commission, noting that that one's different. That one, in fact, might be one that you want to leave alone, given it's representative of the broader valley while still preserving a majority of appointees from Palm Springs. But we did indicate that one other way to preserve some of that ratio might be something like a seven-member commission with four appointees from Palm Springs, three from Mid Valley. So we're looking for direction from council. We could achieve any realigned size of commissions through attrition as commission members' terms expire. We wouldn't recommend doing anything more dramatic than that. But our reasoning is, you know, five has worked very well for, say, a city council. Five to seven seems to be a sweet spot. But again, we're looking for direction from council.
I will jump in on this and say that I think moving to five to seven is a good move and something that we should look at. I very much appreciate doing it by attrition as opposed to arbitrarily removing commissioners that are serving and serving well. As to the airport commission, it is an incredibly unique commission, and I just do not envision that we would be able to achieve the kind of cooperation that we would want to achieve to try to have three regional representatives from the cities. The airport commission is used to having a representative from each city, and I think that's something we should preserve. But that's one opinion.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor on that, on all of her comments.
Councilmember Woods.
I just think, when we look at the airport commission, you know, we, what is, do we know if, you know, when you have that many people, there's a quorum issue many times? Have we had a problem with that at all? Do we know?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So the other thing that I think we need to look at with the airport commission is when somebody from another jurisdiction, which we have no control over, does not reappoint or they can't reappoint because the person has expired, they've kind of lived out their terms per our code, but yet they stay on because the entity, the other jurisdiction, has never appointed somebody. I think it's something we need to fix.
Yes, so to clarify, our rules do state, I believe, after two terms, that we request those agencies appoint someone else. But you're right, the practice has been, at least in some cases, those commissioners, those agencies not appointing a new individual and an individual staying much longer than that, while the others are asked essentially to, that they've told they've fulfilled their duty and are replaced. So that is something we can look at.
I would concur with that point that Councilmember Woods has made. We have heard of instances where the other agency is just simply not acting, and the rule should be that once your two terms are up, you have, there should be somebody reappointed. And perhaps if we need to get the attention of our adjoining communities by having them lose a member, it would be helpful. Other comments or questions?
All right. Challenge number three.
Moving on, all commission meetings currently are held at 5:30. We understand that that was a policy in part to ensure participation. I think some of that may have been before we really resolved to try to maintain hybrid meetings. So one thing council may consider is allowing the commissions to schedule meetings at other times as long as transparency with recorded meetings and convenient options are maintained. So just to make sure we all understand that we did get direction from council when we started to approach going back to in-person, that we really wanted to retain the value of people being able to watch from home, to make comments from home. That does require an AV setup, similar to what we have in the council chambers. We don't have that in many other spaces, although we are designing a space like that in the city's large conference room here at City Hall, so that we'd have at least two rooms. Even then, there is occasion where we will have three commissions scheduled on the same day and time, which is a different kind of issue when it comes to ensuring access to residents. I think we could probably resolve that another way. There are enough days of the week that we could probably have only one on at a time, but it does sometimes cause some constraints, both for certain commission members and sometimes for other members, residents that may wish to participate. So for your consideration, allowing some additional flexibility beyond the 5:30 start time.
Questions or comments from council?
A comment, or, which is also a question. You know, if we do that, and one of the reasons was, one, so working people who work a normal schedule day can be on commissions and boards, and also, so the public could participate. One area, you know, where there were complaints before we did this, and we tried this just as COVID hit, so it's hard to know if it's effective or not, was tied to the planning commission, because people couldn't sit around all day, take a whole day off from work when there's something in their neighborhood that they wanted to speak on. So if we do change that, I really want us to figure a way, at the very least, to make, you know, a way for us to be able permanently, if we do that, to be able to call people who will then have two to three minutes, that hopefully they can pick up the phone during the workday. Because I, given especially the planning commission, which makes final decisions on things that impact, you know, our neighborhoods, our businesses, a lot of business owners can't take off four hours in the middle of their workday. So that, so I'm not a big fan of doing this, but I also understand we have limited staff and limited space to do meetings every night when City Hall's only open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So I understand the reason for this, but I really want to make sure we figure out the public, a really good way to ensure the public can participate.
Mayor Protam.
I agree. I think it's, it's been helpful to have some of these meetings at a 5:30 time. I think of Parks and Recs, for instance, a lot of parents who use the park with their children, I think it's a little bit easier for them if they can call in after they've picked up their kids and gone home for the day. So I guess I would, I would want to kind of see which commissions do we keep in the evening and which commissions can be at another time, and really poll them and find out, you know, what is, what's working and what's not. Because I do know that there have been planning commission members who have been frustrated with how late the meeting goes, too. So there's, there's give and take with all of this. But I do think the important part is making sure that on issues that the public does care about and wants to participate in, that they're able to.
I think all of us are trying to make sure that when someone from the public wants to have an opportunity to speak, that they get that opportunity. I support additional flexibility for what our start times are going to be, and I don't know if there's a perfect time of day that maximizes everyone, but we've also received a number of complaints that having meetings start during the dinner hour is not particularly appropriate, particularly for families, because the kids are not going to wait around. So I encourage staff to use your creativity and give us some options that create additional flexibility.
Councilmember Woods.
I would agree. I think one of the difficulties that we have in speaking to the city manager is because we've gone to hybrid meetings, the technology that's required to maintain those hybrid meetings is very difficult, and we don't have the room or the equipment to do it for all of our commissions, especially in one evening when more than one commission is meeting. So I would, I would agree that an ability for different times is appropriate. I do think some other, some commissions maybe have less impact on residents are things like Village Fest, that meets in person and wants to sample things, wants to smell the candles, you know, all of that kind of stuff, would be a better commission if they actually met in person, and that could be during the day. So.
Don't see any other hands going up, so we'll move on to challenge number four.
And Mayor, if I could, just on closing that last item and hearing the comments from councilmembers, one thing we could consider is emphasizing to commissions that, you know, we really do want to preserve access. And so for those that might have, you know, predominantly parents or those kinds of things participating, just asking them to consider that and perhaps proposing a time that they think would be ideal in balancing the needs of the commission with the needs of the likely participants, and perhaps then giving more flexibility to those that have less comment. Okay? So this one's maybe a little more substantive. Boards and commissions have varying practices with bylaws, use of subcommittees, and other practices. So I don't think all commissions have bylaws. Some, I think, created their own bylaws, really out of the fact that there weren't any, and we do need to be somewhat organized in terms of number of officers and how officers are selected and how long terms are and things like that. Same thing with subcommittees. It's often very effective for commissions to break up work and delegate, but in some instances, that might be the responsibility of a chair, in some instances, the whole committee. Generally speaking, if there's a standing committee, it's technically subject to the Brown Act. If it's an ad hoc committee, I believe it's not. But I think we also want to acknowledge that in general, the idea here is to preserve as much public access and transparency in proceedings. So one of the things we can do is create a template set of bylaws that would really emphasize those points that we think are important in terms of, you know, officers and terms and subcommittees and how they're formed to try to make sure we're not only balancing things like transparency, but for the resident who engages with one of these commissions, you know, it really helps if, when they go to the next one, it functions similarly, right? So if one, all of the subcommittees are open to the public, and the other, they're not, it tends to create a little more confusion. So that level setting would also help us to just provide an element of consistency that makes those processes more understandable and relatable by the general public. So that one's for your consideration, but we would likely need to bring back those template bylaws, vet those with commissions to make sure we're accounting for some of what makes each one unique. And it would take a little more work to put that together.
Questions or comments? Mayor Protam.
Thank you. I think this would be really helpful, even if it does, even if it's just something in the future, and to have them all in one place would also be useful. I think right now, in our municipal code, they're all separated out in different sections. So just some streamlining and clarity would be useful. And to me, most of these should be substantially similar, like you said, to allow for someone to go from one commission to the other, with, you know, the exception of those few that serve advisory roles.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think this has to be given the amount of work it'll take, right, highly prioritized, but I think in the long run, having, doing this is a good thing.
Challenge number five.
This one is also more substantive. So we recognize that there, we haven't always set clear expectations regarding conduct, even things like media relations, where we provide very little guidance or training, stakeholder engagement, working with external jurisdictions, representing commissions with outside groups. Some commissions, I think, are very good at, say, delegating the responsibility. Individual commission members, of course, are free to promote their commission, but we could give additional guidance on when they should represent the commission in a more formal capacity with outside groups, you know, representing the city, et cetera. We've looked at a number of templates coming from other cities, and to the point of Mayor Protam Garner, a lot of those really do kind of, there's one blanket approach that is there to guide all of them functioning a similar way. So we would likely want to borrow from some of those best practices and make a handful of tweaks if we need to make sure it represents Palm Springs and bring that back to your, for your consideration. That would basically be a handbook or a code of conduct.
Any questions, comments? This looks very straightforward and very good. All right. Challenge number six.
Challenge six, members can sometimes just lack clarity on roles and responsibilities. Even things like the Brown Act, we realize, as we inquired sometimes about subcommittees, for instance, the distinction I made earlier of standing versus ad hoc committees. And this is not just unique to the lack of training with commissions, but we haven't always done a good job training our staff members. So part of that code of conduct or handbook would be an outline for an onboarding procedure, so that we really make sure we're not just saying, here you go, but having, you know, training. Maybe we'd find other resources out there, little videos or tutorials, but in some way, making sure that people are really But in some way, making sure that people are really on-boarded to all of those things. And, and likely providing training for our staff that facilitate these processes, so that they have a couple of extra tools in the toolbox, whether that's group facilitation, models for group decision-making. We'll talk a little later about, you know, reports and communication back to council, but really capturing all of those things in, in a set of expectations and with some training.
I don't see any hands going up. I think you can hit it. So number, challenge number seven.
Okay, so sometimes boards and commissions lack strategic direction from council, leading to confusion and frustration. Some commissions struggle to meter the volume of work and produce recommendations that council is ready to act on. So I've described it this way to some commissions and likely with council as well. But what makes commissions so valuable and unique is not just that they're comprised of our residents, but they generally have a passion or affinity for the thing that they're working on. So if you're on a sustainability commission, you likely have a passion for sustainability, and that comes with a real depth of insight, right? You could, you're only there to think of all the things you could do in the area of sustainability. And if you're on the Parks and Rec Commission, you're really invested in all the things we could do with Parks and Rec. Council, of course, sitting at the top of the org chart and representing the only entity that represents our residents directly, has to really see the landscape between all of those areas of specialized expertise. And you know that you can't pursue each one with equal vigor. But you have to do a little bit across the board to advance important agendas across the spectrum. So really, I think that calls for us to help boards and commissions understand council priorities, help, of course, solicit from them perspective on what they think you need to see, that, that perhaps you, you, you don't always, because they do have that depth of insight, and have an exchange, likely once a year, that helps everybody understand what the priorities are. I also think that occasionally, outside of that priority-setting process, it would be pretty easy through some reports or submitting requests, if a commission saw something coming, you know. Things happen in the world, things change, and decides we need to pivot from that strategic direction. It, it could be a proposal to council. And that's not to slow down the process and make it too, too arduous, but it is meant to just make sure that the council and commissions always stay on the same page in terms of what's really important. It enables you to establish conditions, sometimes to make connections. So recall that recently, with an arts commission that wanted to do murals at a parking garage, and it was a council member who remembered that we had some wayfinding to do and that we might be able to integrate those efforts. That's what I mean about, you know, kind of depth of perspective or insight and breadth that the council has, and an opportunity to make some of those connections. So I think we would propose an annual cycle of strategic planning that coincides with council's strategic planning, both for them to input to you and for you to input to them. And then to, in the handbook, to indicate, when you need to pivot, you basically come back and make a proposal to council as a starting point.
Yeah, I think this is a really important recommendation and, but I think we need to be very honest with ourselves. This is going to require significantly more dialogue between council and our various commissions, so that we are providing them with the kind of strategic direction that we would like them to, to do. But I think also this includes us providing opportunities for us to identify to commissions recommendations that we want to hear from them. And I'll cite a very specific example. We've had a lot of conversation here on this dais as to what some of our priorities should be in terms of our parks. And all of that very good conversation, but I would feel much better about the direction that we might ultimately take when it comes to our parks if we had asked our Parks and Recreation Commission to assess in a very full way what they see as the needs of our parks and what are the directions that they would like us to go. And I, I quote that just simply as one example of work that I believe we could give to the commissions to help us make better decisions.
Other questions or comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, for that example. That's helpful. Yeah, I think I had a challenge seven, and to jump ahead of challenge eight was just for the public. Challenge eight is that commissions feel somewhat disconnected from council and how we exchange information. I think these two are, are really linked, and it would be helpful to be able to really work on that. I think of all of the things that you have listed here, those two are the most important for me. Because I think if we have commissions that don't feel like they're participating or they're helpful, then you get people who are uninterested in participating again, a lot of turnover, et cetera. And I think, as Mayor Middleton said, part of the point is that we get to work together and participate in a way that, that works for all of us. So I, I'd really like to, my, my, those two are my top priorities. I don't know how others feel.
Councilmember Woods?
I couldn't agree more with what's been said. I think having good communication between commissions and the council is incredibly important. You know, our commissions, for the, for the, the vast majority of our commissions, they have incredibly talented people. We are very fortunate in Palm Springs. We have an older population that has an enormous amount of experience. They're very engaged, and they want to give back and be civically minded. I'd like to continue to encourage that. But I don't want to, I think, when things kind of don't align, that there becomes a rub and people get very frustrated on both ends of the spectrum. And if we can figure out a way to make, you know, to, and I don't know how that communication is actually going to happen between those two challenges, but really figure out a way that communication can be good. And part of it is, we don't sit down necessarily one-on-one with commissioners, or when we attend them, it's through Zoom. So maybe part of that, I'm not saying it's the solution, but part of that maybe is an annual commission's dinner, or gala, or something of that nature, where commissions can get up and talk to us what they've done through the year. Because we don't always know what they've done. Staff does, but we don't. As a council or the community doesn't necessarily know. Or some commissions don't know what other commissions do, right? And it's important to know that, give, you know, giving them the opportunity to showcase all the work that they've done. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments on seven? And let's move on to challenge eight. And I'll say I already agree with the comments made by the Mayor Protem.
Yes, so challenge eight really is similar. I appreciate the connection there. Sometimes commissions do feel a little disconnected, especially when there have been long periods of time without communication and contact. That was certainly made worse, I think, during the pandemic, because a lot of operations were scaled back to more essential functions. But as we move forward, in addition to having something like this annual cycle of strategic planning and aligning priorities, I, I, we think it would be helpful to create some other processes to make sure throughout the year that there's a connection. I do think it's fair and reasonable that staff can play a role there. So I know we started doing things like receive and file of minutes, but we could issue reports periodically, as one example. It is sometimes very time-consuming for the five council members to have a monthly assignment, or more than one, for commissions, given how much other work we put on your plates. And, you know, some council members work full-time, and, you know, that, that can be hard. Maybe something like attending at least quarterly would be an alternative. Or again, maybe a staff report might be sufficient to keep some of that connectivity. And then I think staff would also make the same recommendation for your consideration, that building in something like an annual get-together might also be an opportunity to celebrate the volunteers who serve on our commissions, that, that give their free time and their, you know, their passion to these endeavors. So this one's not quite as specific, looking for direction from council to figure out what some of those processes may be. And we can certainly take a little time to, to think that through. But something that would really keep that connection stronger throughout the year.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know that in the past, we tried to have liaisons to each of the commissions, and it didn't quite work out for, for anyone, which is unfortunate. But I, I would be interested if it were on a quarterly basis or a check-in. But I, but I really defer to the three council members who were already, who actually went through this process in the past, to see what your thoughts are. Because I do want us to, to have some sort of communication, but I struggle to figure out what that would be. So if you three have any thoughts, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to jump in. I enjoyed when I was liaison with the planning commission. It wasn't possible to be present for all of their meetings, and frankly, it really wasn't necessary to be present for all of the meetings. But it was an opportunity to, to exchange ideas and information, and I thought there was a better connection because there was someone from council who was interacting with them on a regular basis. The, the time demands, though, are pretty significant, particularly with as many commissions as we have. So I think we, I'd like to see us bring something like this back, but be honest with ourselves as to what is, what we are all capable of doing, so that we don't overpromise.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, my experience was, typically was quarterly. And often, it was for part of a meeting. So even af, you know, I did that with Parks and Rec. And it'd usually be at the beginning of the meeting, so they could check in, sort of, you know, it was me, I was a council member at the time, and the city manager. Just to make sure they were on track and not going off, or to raise things they wanted to get council input on. And it was usually at the beginning of the meeting. And I think something like that worked and kept the connection without it having to take, you know, I mean, a six-hour planning commission, right? It's really more, it's just a little check-in time that can be done at the beginning of the meeting. Might be, I thought that was, of the ones I did, that was the most effective and best, I think, use of everyone's time.
Councilmember Holstig?
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely support quarterly reports or even like presentations to city council. I think there's essentially no, almost no channels to get information if you're a commission to city council without relying on staff to do that. So I think that's valuable. And frankly, you know, since we don't, we weren't seeing minutes, and we are very disconnected from what the commissions are doing, I'm not supportive of the liaison structure because it, if we're going to have part-time council members, which is our current structure and pay, it's really burdensome on council members who work full-time, especially when they're during the day. And then when you have a liaison, yes, there's so much expectation to attend every meeting. And then I, you know, you get hate mail from commissioners saying, why aren't you at my meeting? And, and you have to say, you don't understand, I'm liaison to 30 organizations. So I thought that it set people up for, for failure and sort of, you were, and then that just gets information to one commissioner or one council member, sorry. So that council member holds all the information. And so it can be a really, really good back and forth. But I think it also limits the information and isn't in an organized way for the institution. You know, as a commissioner, when I was a commissioner, and I ran for city council because I was frustrated that my work on city council, on commission, wasn't getting to city council or doing much, which I think is why a lot of people run. You know, I, I think that there should be some clear pathways that aren't reliant on, you know, who you have as a council member as a liaison, right? Or who has time to do all that building up of work that's probably staff work. Those are just my thoughts based on my experience.
All right. Any other comments? Those are all good comments. Let's move on to number nine.
Okay, I'd mentioned just a bit earlier that one of the things that's really beautiful about commissions is that you have residents that have a real high affinity or passion for topics. One of the things that happens from that is commissions often have really great ideas for expanding work, maybe starting to divide the work into committees. And again, especially for preserving transparency, each one of those might be a noticed meeting. Each one might be accompanied by an agenda or research or some of the other things that, that tend to fall on staff. Additionally, sometimes they want to get into communication or, you know, other tasks that I don't think any of us think that that's wrong. But sometimes staff struggles to understand where to draw the line. And what the commissions don't always know is maybe what council has asked to come back next month, where staff is doing additional resource, research. Or where me or an assistant city manager or somebody else has directed a department head to focus in a certain area, and then at the same time, a commission is ready to expand a certain project. So we want to accommodate as much of that work as possible, but we'd like to memorialize in the handbook with the permission and direction from council that, that we want to be as helpful as we can, but we also want to empower staff to be able to have a dialogue with commissions and just help understand when, you know, we can't get things done as quickly. Or, you know, in certain instances, communication comes to mind. I think we want to move in a direction of being a little more focused and strategic about communication across the board. And of course, if you're spending your time, you know, really immersed in one topic, you'd love to communicate more and more about that one topic. And we don't always know where to draw the line in terms of balancing all the other competing needs to communicate to the community. So it's those kinds of things that we'd like to capture, at least generally, in a handbook, to make sure that we can balance the demand for time and throttle those commissions, if you will, not only to pace well with council, but also with the demands on staff time.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I, I really love this stuff. I'm actually trying not to talk, but I, I can't help it. And for this one, I think this is really important because I, I have heard lots of little things here and there about staff being really burnt out by our commissions because the commissions demand a lot of our staff. And this is, commissions are one small part of that staff member's time. And so I really support making sure that our commissioners are understanding of what the limitations are for staff. So thank you for including this, and, and I just want our staff members to know that we care and that we don't want them to feel like the commissions, that they have to be, you know, doing every little thing that the commissions want. Because we have the best intentions when we're on commissions, but that doesn't mean we can do it all.
Mayor Protem, or excuse me, Councilmember Holstig?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this recommendation, and I support it. I think that a handbook is often only as good as the training. So I would hate for staff to send a ton, spend a ton of time on a handbook if we're not also going to just do some onboarding. I know when I was a commissioner, and then in the last few years, we frankly, city council directs the interview process. And then, you know, people get ethics training, but then they kind of show up, and they're not really given information verbally about roles and responsibilities and what staff does. And you're just kind of meant to fend for yourself. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion of roles and work and staff responsibility comes from. So I'd love for us to, you know, really have a more comprehensive, like, onboarding process if we do use a handbook.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to challenge number 10.
This is our last one that we think applies very broadly to commissions, but would certainly solicit additional feedback from council. So group decision-making and, and these entities, not unlike council, that serve as a body, come along with some natural tension that sometimes the individual members that make up that body would, would like to continue the pursuit when the meeting is over. That's generally a good thing. We don't want to dissuade people from exploratory conversations and things like that. But we do want to make sure that everyone understands that there is a responsibility But we do want to make sure that everyone understands that there is a responsibility to the larger body, and that really, most of the work should occur when the body is assembled. So this is another area where we think a handbook and, and some onboarding would help to just make sure that, you know, occasionally, we might have a commission member either freelancing on the side a bit, you know, and, and I'm sure with, always with good intentions, but sometimes leaving the rest of the commission out of the conversation of work. That also is almost always leaving the public out of the conversation and work, because we want to maintain transparency. Sometimes those result in additional pressures for staff if an individual commission member has an idea about a conversation that they remembered after the meeting is over, but wants additional research. And so we just want to make sure the expectation is to refunnel that energy back into the next meeting. It is a little bit slow, it, you know, things evolve kind of over time when you don't meet for another month. And again, not to say we wouldn't allow conversations, but that we would just remind commission members and train that there really is a responsibility to act as a body in front of the public, to conduct our work that way, and avoid how much occurs outside of that public process with the body assembled.
Any questions, comments? I think you're on the right track. So you've outlined some next steps for us. Would you like to go over those?
Happily. So first thing we'll do, given this direction, and, and again, if there are other items you want to throw out, we should take an opportunity for those, but we'll begin implementing these recommendations. I'd mentioned, we have collected some existing policies and handbooks and bylaws. Some of that will take some time, but we can begin reconsidering even the size of the commission, which in and of itself would take most likely an amendment to the ordinance. So we'll probably package that with some of the other things that we want to accomplish in that level setting that we discussed. We'll start working on a handbook. We'll consider recommendations for specific commissions that we haven't yet outlined, right? So there might be a few other instances where there are one-off considerations. I know, for instance, the Arts Commission has wanted council to reconsider some of its programs and authority, and, you know, we want to close the loop on those conversations. We, we would aim to establish a regular schedule of any of these connecting activities. So if we bring back something like a proposal that there'll be quarterly presentations to council, that we actually start to mark those on the calendar and work around them so that those things don't get forgotten. And then one possibility for your consideration is to have one of these first get-togethers, potentially a dinner. We do have a study session scheduled for June 21st. That is likely after we will need to adopt the budget, or at least have the public hearing for the budget, so I don't think it would conflict with that schedule. And we could have a joint meeting where we both celebrate and honor the commitment that our commissioners have made, but also give them an opportunity to speak for, you know, some set amount of time, so that other commissions could hear what, what everyone is doing, council could do the same, and, and kind of kickstart some of this process the right way with, you know, some food and, you know, conversation that is a little lighter and, and positive as, as a way to kind of encapsulate some of these things. So that's our next steps, but again, council, if you see other things that we ought to consider, or notes for us on other items we should bring back, we're eager to get that direction.
I support the direction you're outlining. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple of things, you know, as, because I think, you know, without reach to the commissions, you know, and thinking about it, I think some commissions, right, you see HSPV or planning, or sustainability, which is a large commission, but had a dedicated staff person working with them, was able to do so much. And so where, where the commissions have more effectiveness than others, and just get a sense from them what's worked well and what hasn't. Because I think it'll be different among different commissions, right? I did a lot of work, you know, with sustainability in particular, and I wasn't necessarily a liaison, or I think I might have been, but it was just as projects came up, right? And I know Mayor Middleton, when she was on planning commission, worked with sustainability as a liaison back and forth, so things were more coordinated. So it'd be great, you know, maybe it's just meeting with the chairs of all the commissions to really get a sense of where things they thought worked really well and didn't, because I think that, that information will really help as we move this forward. The only other one, I think we've talked before, you know, about how to handle things like appeals, right? Board of Permanent Appeals and things along those lines, and hearing officers, and so it'd be good to get some input from staff on best practices around that, so we can look at that as well.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Along those same lines, I would be interested to also get the perspective on staff that are the liaisons or, or assigned to these different commissions, to see what works well for them and what doesn't. I'm a little bit concerned that we haven't talked enough to staff about their experience working with commissions.
Really good point.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Justin Tean, thank you.
If I might, Mayor, I, I'm hearing that we want to continue to get some good feedback. We, we did have one round with commissions in November, but I think as we approach some of these recommendations and share the information with commissions, or host events like the one we're talking about in June, we could incorporate another opportunity to identify things that have worked and not worked. And we did have two pretty extensive rounds of conversation with staff, both individually and in a group setting, to generate some content. A lot of that fed the, the challenges that are outlined here. But that is something we propose also doing annually as a kind of retreat envisioning session that the commissions would have on their own, to feed information back up to council, and then back as part of that annual cycle, to really make sure we maximize that opportunity to identify what's working and what's not consistently. So if that all sounds good, we'll, we'll start putting this in motion.
Very good. And we will move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Then we will move on to city council and city manager comments, reports, and agenda development. Go ahead, please.
Mayor, if you'd like, I'm happy to point out that what's on our tentative upcoming meeting schedule, unless anyone has feedback before that.
Yep, please.
So May 26th right now is shaping up. We might have a little space on the agenda, but again, every time we're a couple of weeks out, we typically make an adjustment or two, but these are the items we have that we're anticipating right now. Finally, getting started with our discussion on the franchise agreement, potentially some adjustment to the administrative citation ordinance. We have identified, I should pause to say, we've identified a handful of items like this one, where we're trying to prepare the item in the staff report in advance. It's not time-sensitive, but if we have an agenda like this one where we might have some time, we'll add an item like that. We're going to try to collect those on a list for you next time we look at the future meeting schedule, so you know what items are in that queue. And, and they might get bumped as pressing and timely work comes along, but we'll just try to make sure we make the most of the, the time that we have when we meet. We would like to have an additional budget study session focused on the direction we got at our first two. So that's primarily going to be answering all the questions. We're going to basically outline each one that we heard and provide an answer as a starting point in the staff report to facilitating those. And then we'll look both at the general fund and the capital fund in terms of avail, of available funding and the potential uses of funding, both what staff had outlined and what we heard council want to include. We do still need a date for that. We have three that we're working with. Unfortunately, we have not found one yet without conflicts, so we're hoping that maybe someone has some flexibility in the schedule. If you have your calendars nearby, we're looking at potentially May 23rd, June 6th, or June 7th. We, we have not found a date yet where nobody has a conflict. So don't know if anybody has something that can either move, or we can schedule a different time, or something on one of those three dates. May 23rd, June 6th, or June 7th.
Did you, it's, calendaring can be kind of hard during the meeting. Did, should we look at this and get back to you on those dates?
If, if we're not prepared to solidify a date this evening, that would work. Just want to emphasize that we always try to find a date that works for everybody. We haven't been able to do that, especially with a timing that would enable us to have our first public hearing and adopt the budget by, by the end of June. So we just may need, we don't want to run short of a council member, but we'll have to do something, I think, to have that study session.
I think the May 23rd date would be pretty problematic, but hopefully we can make either June 6th or 7th work.
May 23rd doesn't work for me, but the other ones I could make work.
I can make June 7th.
June 6th or 7th can work for myself.
Councilmember Holstage?
June 7th.
I can do June 6th or June 7th. I do have something else on June 7th.
Yes, I was going to say.
Yes, you do.
So June 6th might be better, but I don't know if that works for everyone.
Yes, all right. I think you've gotten some direction there, but I know we're trying to avoid the 7th of June.
We'll, we'll have a couple of follow-up calls, I think, to try to solidify between the, the 6th and 7th, it sounds like, or am I missing that there's consensus on one of those?
Please, in particular, work with Councilmember Holstage to see if we could find a, not just simply a date, but a time that would work, and that's, that's an incredibly important date.
And I think we don't have to do these in the evening, if that worked for everyone, but, you know, that may be a problem for other people who work and have other jobs.
Are there other council member comments or questions? Mayor Protem, or excuse me. Everybody's Mayor Protem tonight. Councilmember Coors?
Been a long time for me. Yeah, I just wanted to raise, you know, I think we, we've talked for a couple of years in envisioning about, and sorry, it came up in, as we talked about how much time these jobs take, we talked about being liaisons for commissions, what the appropriate salary level is for city council. And I just want to put on the radar that, you know, we need to do it before there's a new council for, to apply to them, right, before, I don't know if it's before elections or before swearing in. And, you know, I don't know if the majority wants us to have that discussion, but I'd like to see it agendized at some point. And, you know, the state does it through, I think San Francisco and some other cities do it through an independent, you know, salary-setting group, you know, analyzes what salary should be, right? No guarantees they go up or down, but, you know, really tries to figure out based on what the job entails, what the salary should be. So it's not us making that decision, it's their recommendation, and obviously, I think we'd have to adopt it. But I just don't want that to get lost, and then it's the end of the year, and we're like, oops, we forgot to do that again. So I don't know where other council members are on that, but I, I think we should do it, so it can be done in time before a new council's seated. So it applies to them.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I really support that. And as someone who just had long conversations today about how difficult it is to hold a job, full-time job, and be on city council, and the pay is so low when you are working full-time as a city councillor, and it's just not sustainable, and I don't think we're ever going to get a diverse group of citizens representing us if, if we continue on this path. And so I really do think that it, that it is important, it's important to me personally, and I think it's important not just for me as a city council member, but for me as a resident who wants to see us grow in, in our city and in our roles.
We got very clear recommendations a few years ago that this is a conversation that we need to have, and it's never an easy conversation, but it's one that we need to, to engage. Councilmember Woods?
No, I would agree. I think, I can just tell you that I empathize with Mayor Protem. And I think the last year has been extremely, the last two years, stressful with COVID, and the ways that the city has to react, the way that we've had to react, the way the staff has to react, the number of constituents. So if there isn't going to be, or part of the staff report, if there isn't going to be a pay raise, at least some processes, maybe there's some administrative help on answering emails or clearing through those emails, you know, maybe, you know, whatever form works best for the city as a whole to keep our messaging. And then what, if we were to increase the salaries, you know, what would be the responsibilities, and just to find those a little better. I think that would be important, because there is a lot of work that's dealt with not only reading staff reports, but as we heard with the Fuego Light Club, touring, talking to people, you know, and that's just one item that's on the staff report, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. If there are no other questions or comments from anyone, then we have reached the point of adjournment at 9:10 PM. The next regular city council meeting will be held on May 26, 2022, at 5:30 PM. We are adjourned. Please be safe out there.